We did this, we did this last meeting. Sherri, you just noted when the fifth commissioner showed up. But I'd like to get, get started on this. Got lots of, not going to run down any rabbit holes tonight, but I do have some general questions.
I think comments are always welcome.
Yeah, right. Okay. It being six o'clock, I hereby call to order the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for Wednesday, November 3rd, 2021. Sherri, could we have a roll call, please?
Chair Colossi?
Here.
Vice Chair Nolan?
Here.
Commissioner Lottis?
Here.
Commissioner Bennett?
Here.
Commissioner Trent?
Not yet.
Yet.
Okay. Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Lottis, would you lead us?
Sure. Ready? Again.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Time for public communications. And Lucas, you said you wanted to make an announcement.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a brief announcement here regarding an item that was going to be on the agenda tonight, but I wanted to identify that DRP 21-001, which is the hotel, proposed Hotel Eau Robler modifications, was noticed in the paper on October 22nd and to the surrounding community within basically a thousand square foot. For tonight's PC meeting, however, new information was recently provided to the Community Development Department.
After that notification?
After the notification. Because of that new information being considered and addressed as part of the proposal, the item will be re-noticed once ready to move forward. Anyone in the audience or online, watching virtually, who would like to speak on this matter should do so during this time now, which is the public communication portion.
Okay. Very good. Yes, public communications is the time set aside for persons who wish to comment on any, excuse me, address the public, the Planning Commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. And tonight, the Hotel Eau Robler is one of those. We may briefly discuss those matters, but will generally refer them to staff or place them on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken at this meeting in response to public communications. So, is there anyone here present who wishes to speak during public communications?
Yes.
Please come forward, sir, and identify yourself. And, oh. And you have the normal three minutes to address the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Chris Gardner. I'm a resident of Ojai. And I'm here actually to talk about the Eau Robler. Given that it has now been postponed, and I only found that out earlier today, I'm not going to talk about the specifics because I actually don't know any. I want to talk about two actions or two issues, though, that I think need to be addressed as part of this. One, obviously, is the transparency issue that you just announced. So I'm here. There's probably others who are here who received notification. In that notification, apparently, there were some inaccurate statements about parking and this and that that have changed. And there were also, obviously, the now inaccurate date. I was curious whether we would get another notification or how we would find out. In my view, this should have been on the agenda as a postponed agenda item. So those of us who are interested in this could have read that on the agenda and seen it was reset to some date certain. So I guess that was my ask, is there going to be a date certain? Or are we going to get re-notation? I guess the answer is the latter, which is fine. So that was the first thing. The second one I just wanted to address was the issue of fairness. I have a property, a rental property, that is about 100 feet from what will be the Eau Robler, and it's adjacent to what I understand is a lot that they've purchased that they hope to use for parking. I have tenants that are literally going to be five feet from that parking lot. They're bedroom windows. So I have some concerns about that that I will address. I recently, three years or so ago, did a remodel on that unit and was required by the Planning Commission, Planning Department, excuse me, to add four on-site parking spots. Not remove them, add four. We had four. They made me add four more so I could remodel, basically, a house. Didn't change the parking of that house. Didn't remove any parking. Had to add four sites. I also had a second issue. Wanted to put up a little fence, three foot high, five foot from the road. Wasn't allowed because I needed to be 10 feet because we needed room for the sidewalk to be put in and then five feet back. Turns out, my neighbor put one in a few months later after apparently the rules were changed. That neighbor, exactly where I wanted to put one, was not allowed. That neighbor's a council member. So my issue was really fairness. You know, I struggled with the Planning Department for months going through those couple of issues. And now I find out that there's potentially a big investor in town who's going to get a waiver on parking. Didn't work for me. There's another one, politician, who got a waiver or got the rules changed on fencing. So, you know, as you look at this, I'd at least like you to be aware that there is a big impact to the people there if we add restaurants or parking next to neighbors, et cetera, et cetera, and to consider what the rest of us have to go through to get a permit and to remodel a old, worn-down building where apparently others don't have to go through the same level of turmoil. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sherri, do we have anyone electronically waiting to speak tonight?
No.
Okay. Then we'll close the public communications and go to our consent item, the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission, October 20th, 2021. Do any commissioners have any refinements to the minute, to the minutes? I gave Sherri a little bit of errata, but if you find something else that you think should be added or changed or deleted, speak now. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended. The copy that sits here with me now has errata in it that was not in the original booklet. Just clarifying a couple of my statements that were called out in the minutes. Ah, Commissioner Trent is with us. Welcome, sir.
Hello, hello. Sorry I was a little late. I just didn't get the invite into my email. I don't know if it went into junk or not, but I'm here now.
And we're glad.
Thank you.
Anyone care to make a motion to approve the minutes of October 20th as amended?
I'll vote.
Very good. For discussion, oh, you, Commissioner Lottis has a second. Thank you. Any discussion of the motion to approve the minutes? All right. Sherri, would you call a roll, please?
Colossi?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Lottis?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Item two, a discussion item, Planning Commission training. Receive training from the city attorney. Is this going to hurt?
I don't think so. I think this is going to be a great opportunity to, to learn a little bit and to ask some questions as well. Tonight's item involves a training opportunity really kind of Rosenberg's Rules of Order, the Ralph and Brown Act and the California Public Records Act training. Or is it just those, those two? Okay. Nikhil is here as the Assistant City Attorney. He's going to go through the PowerPoint. I've got a PowerPoint I'm going to pull up here in a minute. He'll, he'll walk through. It's about, I want to say about 33 slides. So.
This, this training should, with questions, take about an hour. The specifics, the reason for this training is that we have new members, oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. So the reason for this training is that we have new members of the commission who have joined us. And I, it's been a while since we've had a training like this. And also because it's always good to have a refresher on, on this.
And it's required.
And it's, well, this is not the, the required ethics training, which I believe will happen in January.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And that's a, and that's a, that's a training specifically on the Political Reform Act and Section 1090 of the Government Code. This training is on the mechanics of meetings and then the Brown Act itself. And so, you know, you will have noticed during, you will have noticed during the, during the meetings, I have occasionally admonished or advised council members of the commission that certain things have to be done in a certain way or certain things can't be discussed or certain things, the commission can't take a particular action because it, because of the Brown Act. The reason we have, you know, we have public meetings is because of the Brown Act. The reason our agendas exist as the way they do is because of the Brown Act. The reason we have posting guidelines and the reason why sometimes staff ha, you know, something may not immediately appear on the Planning Commission's agenda is because of the deadlines specified by the Brown Act. So with that, I mean, that's, as, just sort of a background as to, you know, there's a, there's a reason why, you know, sometimes I'm occasionally butting in, but it's for the greater good. So, let's get, go ahead and get started here. First thing we're going to talk about is the Rosenberg's Rules. So Rosenberg's Rules, you've all heard of Robert's Rules. Rosenberg's Rules is actually what the city uses. It's a simplification of the Robert's Rules. And Rosenberg's Rules are basically governing meetings. So the meeting, when we say they govern meetings, they, it means that the Rosenberg's Rules are how motions are introduced, you know, the order in which things happen, that sort of thing. So let's, let's talk about basically the basic format for an agenda item. So the first thing that happens is that the chair, in this case, Chair Colossi introduces, announces the agenda item. And so he will read, and in, in, in the agenda, you'll see that the chair, there, there, there's a prompt for the chair to announce the agenda item. Second thing that happens is that the chair then invites the appropriate staff person to present the item. So in our context, it most often happens is that there's a presentation by staff, either Lucas or maybe perhaps Mora or some other member of staff will present on the item. Then there is a period where the commissioners can ask the, the staff person questions. So, you know, as Lucas is going through his staff report, for example, let's take a hypothetical, he's going through for, perhaps discussing, you know, a conditional use permit. And as he's going through this, you know, commission members are welcome and to ask him questions to clarify certain points in that staff, in that staff report. Then the, the chair opens public comment, invites public comment. And that's the time when the members of the public can get up and speak about that particular item that's on the agenda. Then, and again, this is, basically, this is what we've been doing.
That's the public hearing.
This is the public hearing. Then, then the public hearing is closed, at which point it's commissioner discussion. And so the commissioners will discuss staff's recommendation, whether to amend it, whether to change it, whether to push it, et cetera. Or if, you know, sometimes there may be no discussion from the commissioners. Unlikely, especially if it's a, if it's like a complex, you know, a design review permit or conditional use permit, you know, commissioners will have, you know, there'll be, there'll be reasons to talk. But if there isn't, you know, you can go straight to a motion. Or at the end, when the discussion's dying down, if there's some sort of a consensus forming, the chair can ask a commissioner to make a motion. So when Chair Colossi says, I'd invite a motion here, then we go to that. And then, any motion has to be seconded. Then there's a roll call vote. And when we say a roll call vote, normally, so you can do a voice vote or you can do a roll call vote. Because we are, our practice has become almost always roll call votes, specifically because now that we're in this hybrid with the Zoom and appearing in person, actually, the rules require a roll call vote. So there pretty much always will be a roll call vote. So the recording secretary will go down the list of each commissioner, recording how they vote. And then the chair announces the results of the vote and what action was taken. And at that point, once the action is taken, the item is closed. We move on to the next item. Okay, so next slide. So when we say motion, so basically, there are three basic motions. The first is your standard motion. It's a motion to approve, deny, or continue. So, for example, going back to our motion to approve the minutes, there was a motion to approve. It's a basic motion to approve the minutes as amended. Second motion is a motion to amend. And so a motion to amend does not approve the motion, but it amends whatever the item is. And then there can be a motion to, to approve. It's possible, and we've done this before, is a motion to amend followed by immediately by a motion to approve. And then finally, there's what we call a substitute motion. So a substitute motion is a competing motion. So how does that work with, you know, substitute, how do, how do these motions kind of, you know, interplay?
What's the precedence?
Exactly. So the, there can be only a maximum of three motions on the floor. So this very rarely happens, but if a member makes a motion, another member chooses, makes a motion to amend, and another member makes a motion, and then another member makes a motion, at that point, either the chair or myself will step in and say that, there are too many motions on the floor, and the floor is full. And so we need to first decide on the three motions that are pending. You can't go beyond the three motions. You can't, you have to, and, and how does it work? So the last motion introduced is always considered first. So you go down, and, so the one that was interested at the beginning is the one considered last. So practically speaking, the chair, it works best when the chair wants to consider one motion at a time. So having discussion, it's, looks, it's very difficult in the minutes to consider two motions at once. It's best to take the motions. So, for example, if you are having discussion about a motion, stay on, stay on topic about discussion of that motion. You shouldn't be referencing another motion that's on the floor. You'll, you'll deal with that when you get to it. Because then, because this is a decision-making body. And if we, and so it helps to have clarity in decision-making. So that's why we have kind of, we'll go through it chronologically. And so I, I know it sounds a little bit confusing, but you all have seen it kind of in, in practice. We've had, I think, in, in past meetings, I'm not going to refer to any specific item, but in past meetings, we've had competing motions. We've had motions to amend. And we've kind of seen how the most recent motion goes first, and then, and then we go down the list. And chances are, the, one motion may moot another motion. And so then, that's why we go through with the most recent motion first, because more likely than not, as we go down the list, the, the motions introduced at the very beginning have been mooted or are irrelevant at that point. Next slide. So, other motions. So these are motions that occasionally, you know, you know, these are motions that occasionally you may, these are unlikely, I mean, they're rare, but you can do so. So, for example, a motion to adjourn, this happens at every meeting, where there, Steve will either, Chair Colossi will either adjourn the meeting by consensus, or there'll be a motion to adjourn. And technically, any member of the commission can make a motion to adjourn. If it's seconded, it'll, it'll go to a vote. If the motion, motion to adjourn is approved, the meeting is over, and all items are, are then continued by, by default. There's a motion to recess occasion, this doesn't necessarily happen in Planning Commission meetings, but it could. If it's a very long Planning Commission meeting and people want to take a break, you can do a motion to recess. And then you can recess, and in that motion, you can say, I'd like to make a motion to recess for five minutes. And I've seen this happen in city council meetings. Then, for example, a motion to limit debate, this requires a two-thirds vote. So on a five-member commission, it would require a two-thirds vote to approve a motion to, it would require four, four votes out of five to approve, to limit debate. So for example, if you want to cut off the time or limit debate to, you know, only five minutes or something like that, if, I mean, if there's a reason to, again, I don't think in this commission, we've ever had the, felt, had the reason to limit debate or felt the need to limit debate. Motion to close nominations. So, again, very rare. Occasionally, I think all the nominations to have, in this commission, have been done by consensus or somebody volunteering and everyone agreeing. But there may be a situation where there's quite a few nominations, and then there would be a motion to close nominations. Again, you need a, a two-thirds vote, so four out of the five. A motion to object to consideration of a question. So that means that a motion to object to the, basically, an entire item here. So that would basically prevent the commission from discussing that particular item. Again, very rare. You're going to need a two-thirds vote. So you need to convince three other commissioners that the Planning Commission should not consider the item at this time. Unlikely. A motion to suspend rules. So a motion to suspend rules does the following. Basically throws the Robert's Rules out of, or the Rosenberg's Rules out the window for, for just that item. And so you can, for example, go back and extend ta, you can ask, you know, change it so that people can speak more than three minutes. You can go back, reopen a public hearing. You can go back and consider, reconsider an item. You can, it's, but again, to do that, you need a four out of five vote. So it, when they say two-thirds votes, it's because there are, these are fairly substantive motions. You're, you're basically changing the meeting. And so that's why we're asked, that's why we say four out of five. A motion to reconsider. So this is something where an item was, it has to be made at the, at the meeting where the item was first voted on and can only be made, made by a commissioner who voted in the majority on the original motion. So somebody who lost can't then do a motion to reconsider, but somebody who was voted in the majority can do a motion to reconsider.
And that's either approving or denying any particular item?
That's correct.
Okay.
Next slide.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
So, as an example, if there's an item that was on the agenda, say, item one, and item one ends up getting approved, let's say?
Correct.
Three, two, or something like that. And then you get on the line, and we get to item four. Can they bring up item one again?
So yes, it's within that same meeting, but then you still need to convince, but the only person who can bring that up is somebody who voted for item one. And basically asking to reverse the decision from item one, they can make a motion, they can say, I move to reconsider the commission's vote, reconsider item number one. And that doesn't reverse it. All it does is they would, if, if they get a majority to back them to reconsider, all it does is go back to discussion again and then perhaps a revote later.
So it, it negates the original vote?
Yes.
And then you can, you reconsider the item?
Exactly.
And revote?
Exactly.
Okay.
And so you could raise that at any point during the?
During that meeting.
Following items or between items?
Yes.
Or anytime?
Yeah. Before the meeting is over, though. Once the meeting is over, then that trip has sailed. But you can only reconsider and go back to something if you voted for it the first time. So if you're in the, if you're on the other side, you can't, there's no, I guess, I guess they call it like the, there's no sore loser option where you can say, you know, you can demand that they revisit it because you lost. So it's, so that's why it's somebody who made, who voted for something and then has now decided, I'm going to, I think we should relook at this again, and they need to then convince, I mean, practically speaking, some of the people who also voted for it to reconsider it again. So it's a very high bar. Very rarely does it happen. Next slide. So, this, I mean, this is something that never, I've never seen come up, you know, in this commission. I've seen it happen at other, other bodies where I've been present, is the idea of courtesy and decorum. So the chair is ultimately the one responsible for courtesy and decorum. A commissioner may be interrupted for the following reasons. So privilege, anything that interferes with the normal comfort of the meeting. Order, anything that wouldn't be, that would not be considered appropriate conduct of the meeting. And appeal, so the commissioner may appeal the decision of the chair after a second debate and majority vote. Call for the orders of the day, so when we drift off of topic. Again, these are all very rare, but you can ask for an order of the day so that, to order, ask us to, the, you know, the chair may say, can I call for the order of the day to, if the commissioners say going off topic and discussing something completely different, to bring them back on topic. Usually at that point, I will have probably said something saying, but we should, I would, you know, advise commissions, members of the commission to focus their attention on this item. So I, I have said that. I, I know, and so, you know, that's not me being, it's not me being, you know, you know, intrusive. It's just, this is the law. And then, secondly, there's withdrawing, withdrawing a motion. So during debate, somebody can interrupt and withdraw a motion. And so the maker of the motion, as, you know, can, can go ahead and interrupt. And so courtesy and decorum, the reason this exists is to prevent basically just cross-talk, to prevent, you know, to keep the, the meeting going. And that's, I mean, the whole point of Rosenberg's Rules and Robert's Rules and, you know, the parliamentary rules are to, they're a framework to affect, to get a legislative body to make a decision, to keep things moving quickly. One way or another, something has to be done. You have to get down the agenda. And so that's, that's the reason for this. And so that's the courtesy and decorum aspect of this, is that, you know, everybody, you know, we're very good in this commission of, you know, letting others talk. You know, the people raise their hands, the chair calls on it. I've been in commissions where, you know, everyone tries to talk at once, and, or I've been in city councils where everyone tries to talk at once, and it does not work. Very, very, nothing gets done. And especially if the chair doesn't intercede and try to bring everyone, call, call the meeting to order, then, you know, you tend, you, it makes for a poor record, and it also makes for poor decision-making because you don't know what you're discussing. So I think we do a very good job in this, in this commission of, you know, going down, and I think Chair Colossi, you know, goes down and, and asks each member of the commission. No one interrupts, no one cuts off members of the commission, which I, you know, I commend this commission for doing that. I think it's, it's really great. You'd be surprised of how, how often that doesn't happen in other, on other, in other bodies. So, but yeah, it's, it's just basically, it's, the purpose is to keep the commission, the, the commission, I guess, the wheels of the commission moving. And so that's kind of my, that's, that's my talk on the Rosenberg's Rules. And this is for, you know, members of the, new members of the commission and, and existing members. But I want to pause here, and if there's any questions, I will take them now on just this topic. Yes?
Not a question so much as, I want to apologize to my fellow commissioners because I did not maintain decorum at the last meeting, and I regret that. I've always been pleased with the fact that the commission has been able to disagree without being disagreeable. And I felt like I did not keep to that standard at the last meeting. So my apologies.
Well, Steve, I, I disagree. I don't know what you're talking about. And I think, I think that we have had the meeting conducted very generously and in, in substantial order. And I'm, I've been very pleased with the conduct of the, of the commission, the chair and the commission. So.
One other point of clarification on a, on a previous chart, if, if you don't mind. You talked about motions, motions to amend, and substitute motions.
Correct.
I have seen at city council meetings, a lot of times, a motion will be made, another member of the legislative body will say, is the motion maker willing to amend the motion to do so? And it's done without a separate vote.
Yes, that's offering a friendly amendment.
If the motion maker and the seconder both agree to that amendment, then they skip a vote on the amendment.
Yes.
But then there is the possibility, and I've seen it a couple of times during the last city council administration, where a substitute motion is made and then, and seconded, and then the council had to vote on that substitute motion, which if passed, mooted the original motion, which if failed, then returned to the council to voting on the original motion. So it gets a little bit, a little bit screwy sometimes, or seems like it.
Yeah, I, I, I've seen it where it becomes very hard to follow. And we really haven't, we really haven't done that. But, yeah, I, I, I mean, I hope the, I think it's much easier to make a motion, discuss it, and decide on that, and then maybe some amendment or something.
Right.
But just one at a time is really so much clearer.
But if a motion, yeah, if another motion to amend is made, though, and seconded, then you have to deal with that amendment?
Yes.
Before you can deal with the original motion. So.
Yes, exactly. Yes, exactly. So, and that's kind of why we recommend, and, that's why the, the max is three motions at once, and then going down the list of each one.
Three at once is already too confusing.
Already too many, right? We, I think we've, and I know that, especially if we have very complicated, for example, amendments, and I think I've, I've had members of the commission, you know, they wanted to, you know, say, you know, amended as, and so sometimes, occasionally, I will choose to restate the amendment, so that everybody knows what the amendment is, so that way, and, and, and that's totally fine. Members of the commission will want to restate the amendment, so it's always on the record.
Even as important, the audience needs to understand what the amendment is and what the original motion was.
Exactly. That's the other thing, is that, one thing I, I, and I, and thank you for bringing that up, is that this is not just a decision-making within this closed environment. There's, it's a public meeting. So, it's very hard for members of the audience to figure out what's going on, if there are competing motions on the, on the floor, or, you know, that, there's, the decorum isn't being observed, because there's crosstalk, and it's very hard for the audience to follow along. And so, when a decision is made, the final decision is made, it has to be very clear to members of the public, either here or watching on, at home, or on Zoom, or whatever, what the decision was. What, what action did the commission take? And that's usually captured, and, you know, and then I think Sheri will tell you, the clarity is good, so when she writes up the minutes, she knows what's been, what's, what's happened. And so, yeah, so that's kind of, but, any other questions about the mechanics? Either from John or Jamie? Any, any questions?
John or Kathy?
I'm good.
Oh, I think I'm good.
I didn't, I didn't point out Commissioner Nolan, because she's been on the commission for a long time, so she's, I would, I would consider an expert, but, you know.
Well, I asked questions, too. So I noticed a couple of things where, I think, at a meeting or two back, I wasn't sure what to do.
Oh, yeah, no worries. And that's also something, if the commission, during the course of the meeting, it's also very permissible, that's why you have an attorney here present, usually, is, you can ask, "What do we do next?" And, and, or, you know, you can ask staff, or how does this, how, how, like, "How am I supposed to do on this item?" Exactly. And so, that's kind of, you know, that, that's very permissible during the meeting, is to ask for help. Or, ask, "How can I, how do I phrase this emotion?" Or, "What is our, what do we do next?" And, oh, perfect. So I think, let's go on to the Brown Act.
Can we unsuperimpose? Yes.
There you go. So, the Brown Act. So, the Brown Act is California's sunshine, it's basically California's open meetings law. So, prior to 1952, there were a lot of public meeting laws that were written to govern different types of agencies. So every agency had its own version of the Brown Act. Everyone's rules were different. So, it was expected in 1952 that your local city would adopt its own rules about how it wants to conduct meetings. And that was chaos, because, and it led, led to this famous article in 1952 by a mem, writer for the, I think, the Chronicle, who wrote this article, series called Ten-Part Your Secret Government. And it was, at that time, quite a few decisions were being done, you know, by obscure agencies, massive decisions on land use that were done basically in secret, because the agency sets its own rules. And so, they would hold meetings in the middle of the night. They would hold meetings with no, with, with no notice whatsoever. They would hold, you know, they would amend the quorum rules at will, and it was chaos. And so, quite a few things were done surreptitiously, and it became a big scandal, because all of a sudden, you know, these, this body who could set their own rules was doing those things. So, the league basically lobbied Assemblymember Ralph M. Brown to adopt one set of reforms to apply to all local public agencies, and that was the Brown Act. So the Brown Act actually applies to all local agencies, not functions of the state, all local agencies. There, there's a similar law that applies to the state and all, and all subdivisions of the state, called the Bagley-Kean Act, which mirrors the Brown Act. The Brown Act does not apply, however, or the Bagley-Kean Act does not apply to the legislature, the California Assembly and California Senate, which set their own rules.
As always.
Yeah. And, I mean, they, they passed the law, so they, they, they still continue to set their own rules, but they have, they have, you know, they, they have their own rules. So, but those two laws don't apply to them. So, next slide. So when we say the Brown Act, we say, the, there's the most important part of the Brown Act is in the preamble here. "All meetings of the legislative body of a local agency shall be open and public, and all persons shall be permitted to attend any meeting in the legislative body of a local agency, except as provided in this chapter." So, the Brown Act says, is very clear. The goal of the Brown Act is that government meetings are public. Anytime the government, a legislative body of a government is meeting, that meeting must be open to the public in one form or another, unless there's an exception. And we'll talk about the exemptions going through this. Almost none of those exceptions apply to the Planning Commission. Usually, they mostly apply to the city council. So you, for example, you'll see closed session, for example, and we'll talk about how that specific exception, exception works. But, the principle is this. If the legislative, if a decision-making entity, we call it a Brown Act body, is meeting, that has to be open to the public. And, so that, that means that it doesn't apply to, for example, department meetings. So if the city manager wants to have a meeting with the heads of, you know, the Community Development Department and Public Works, that's not a Brown, that's not a public meeting. But if it's something either appointed members or elected members meeting, that is a Brown Act meeting, and that has to be open to the public, and they have to take public comment at that meeting. Next slide.
Do the public's business in public.
Exactly. Do the public's business in public. So, I kind of touched on this a little bit, but what is a legislative body? So, a legislative body is the governing body of a local agency. And so, in this, in the city of Ojai, it would be the city council. A local agency is an agency that's created by state or federal statute, or federal, by state or federal statute, so commissions, and any subcommittee, board, or commission created by the local agency. So, Ojai is, it's, what's called a general law city. It's organized into the general laws of the state of California. It's not a charter city. There are some cities that you'll see are called charter cities, and these are law, these are cities that have a charter approved by the legislature. And there are, I don't recall the, the last time what the number is, but, most of the big cities are charter cities. Some of the oldest cities in the state are charter cities. They received a charter from the legislature. The, the majority, the vast majority of cities are general law cities, like the city of Ojai. And, as part of that general law, the general laws that apply in the government code, a general law city must have a city council, and it must have a planning commission. Every other commission is discretionary. So, for example, in the city, there's the Historic Preservation Commission, the Parks Commission, the Arts Commission. Those are not, those are not required by state law. They're created by the, by the council, and they're discretionary. The council can create or abolish at will, right? But the planning commission is required by state law. There has to be some sort of appointed planning body for, to, to consider land use issues, that's independent, that's separate from the city council. And so, because these have all been created by the city council, they're also subject to the Brown Act. Next slide. Okay, so, there's also something called an ad hoc committee. So, this is advisory to the legislative body. So, it's temporary, a limited purpose, and it's composed of a less than, of a less than, less than a quorum of the legislative body's members. And so, for example, if the city council wanted to create an ad hoc committee to consider, you know, a, a, they're standing, like, for example, some, there are basically standing ad hoc, there's, basically, if they wanted to consider, and I'm just gonna throw this out there, like, an ad hoc committee to consider, I don't know, trees in the city, and they appointed two members of the city council to be part of this ad hoc committee. They, they have a limited purpose, trees, and there's less than a quorum, so there's only two. And, and they say this ad hoc committee's gonna be meet for this next six weeks, and their purpose is to develop a report and get, you know, gain information about this condition of the city's trees. And I'm, this is just, I'm just throwing this one out there. This is the first thing that came to mind. Then there's something called a special advisory group. So this is created by staff or a single member of the legislative body. It's advisory to staff or the single member. This is, this is very, very rare in cities of this size. In, for example, Los Angeles, every member of the city council has a, has a discretionary budget and a staff. And, they have, you know, they have their own, they have deputies who handle land use, they handle public safety, et cetera. And then, the planning commission also has, each member of the planning commission has their own staff, and they handle, they, they deal with public outreach and that sort of stuff. And that's what's called a special advisory group. And then, public employees. So, all three of these ad hoc committees, special advisory groups, and public employees are not subject to the Brown Act. They're not legislative bodies. So, I'll take, I'll give you an example. If, the, the staff decided to create an advisory body of members of the public to advise on a single issue, like, for example, let's say the status of the city's trees, right? That is a special advisory group, doesn't meet in public, and it's not subject to the Brown Act. But these are rare, right? And so, and then the last one is public employees. So, I'll take, sorry, I'll take Lucas as a example here. He is not subject to the Brown Act. So, the public doesn't, and I'm sure Lucas is very happy about this, public doesn't have a right to show up to his office to sit in all the meetings he's sitting, that he's doing, unless he really wants to allow them to do that. I have a feeling.
I have an open door policy.
Yeah, that's true. He does have an open door policy. But it is not required, and he could close that door, because he's not subject to the Brown Act. Next slide? I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, let's see. The others, the slide previous had subcommittee created by the local agency. So, a subcommittee could be created by the planning commission, correct?
Correct.
In fact, there is one.
And there are, yeah, is it trees?
There's at least one, the Complete Streets Committee.
Complete Streets.
Which is a Brown Act body.
It is a Brown Act body. That's why its meetings are noticed, and they're open to the public.
Yes.
I just wanted a brief comparison of the subcommittee to the, something you had on the next slide.
Ad hoc.
Ad hoc.
Yeah, ad hocs are created for a single, single issue for a limited purpose. A subcommittee is a standing committee.
Limited purpose, limited time.
Yeah. Next slide. So what is a meeting? So we, we've talked about, you know, members are allowed at meetings. But, let's talk about the definition of what a meeting is. So a meeting is "Any congregation of a majority of the members of a legislative body, at the same time and location, including teleconference, to hear, discuss, deliberate, or take action on any item that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body." So, anytime three members of this commission are in one place at the same time and location, that is technically a meeting, if they are going to consider, you know, hear, discuss, or take action on any item. Now, that's not to say that, for example, if the city holds a reception, if it's Ojai Day, and all the members of the commission happen to be present at, you know, a booth or something, it's not a meeting, because you're...
Long as we're not discussing commission business.
Correct. And so, for example, sometimes you will get emails from the, from Lucas, who will blind copy and email to all members of the commission, say, "Do not respond to this email." Because when you respond to that email, if all members of the commission are copied, that suddenly becomes a meeting, and it's a Brown Act violation, because we haven't held it, held to the public. And so, again, I would caution new members of the, and old members know this, but new members do not respond to emails that were, usually we'll BCC everyone, but do not respond to emails that are sent to the entire commission, because you're creating a meeting, and we don't want that. So if you have a specific question or comment, address it specifically to Lucas and only Lucas.
Reply, but don't reply all.
Exactly. And by the same topic, I'll go to that next, next bullet point there. Use, use of a series of communications, any kind directly or through intermediaries, to discuss, deliberate, or take action on any item or business that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. So, a, one commissioner, and we'll go into kind of how this works, the hub and spoke, and that sort of thing. But what, say, you know, you're all on a, you're all on a group chat, a thread, and maybe you're all members of a book group, and you're all discussing the book. And then, also, suddenly, you're discussing something that's on the, a CUP that's on the next meeting. That's a meeting. And so, do not do that. And then, for example, you know, should, should you choose to be social and invite members of the commission to your meeting, or to your house for dinner, right? And, not all of them show up, say, three of them show up, so a majority show up. Then, you know, you're having, you're having dinner, you've, you've, you're about to start the dessert course, and then you guys start talking about a, a particular issue, a land use issue. That's a meeting. And unless you want to open your house, you want to share your dinner party with every, everybody else in the city, you're committing a Brown Act violation. So, I caution you not to discuss this. And, the best way to avoid this is try to avoid discussing things outside of the meeting with other commissioners as much as you can. Now, a one, like, remember, the, one caveat here, a majority of the members of a legislative body. And, when, when I, when we say a majority, and we'll talk about this in the next slide, if, you know, Chair Quilisi, I'm gonna use this as an example. If you speak to Commissioner Bennett about something, and then you speak to Commissioner Lottis about something, and you speak to Commissioner Nolan about something, you're not, you're still violating the Brown Act, because you're speaking about the same thing. And we'll talk about how that works. So, and you don't know who is speaking to who. And so, my general advice is...
Don't do it.
Don't do it. Talk to staff directly. Staff can relay your concerns to the entire commission if it is a concern, and they'll relay it. It's a one-way communication. So all staff, communication to the commissioners. If it's to all the commissioners, always a one-way communication. If it becomes a two-way, then it becomes a meeting. So, contact Lucas directly. You can ask me, or Matt, Matt Summers, the city attorney. But I would highly, highly recommend not discussing it. Just talk about other things, you know, movies you've watched, that sort of thing. Don't, don't talk about this. Next slide. So, there are two types of what we call serial meetings. So there's the hub and spoke, and the daisy chain. And, when we talk about the hub and spoke, and we'll go through this, is the next slide actually going to these in detail? I don't remember if I did that. Go to the next slide. Actually, here we go. So this is basically what we call serial meetings, right? It's having, is basically having one person discussing the same thing with multiple people. That's a serial meeting. Same thing with, if you're all on a, a text message or an email, discussing something as part of an email thread. That is a serial meeting, and that is a violation of the Brown Act. Yes?
In a prior briefing of this sort, it's been three or four years, probably, I thought we were told that one person could talk to others in turn, as long as there was no discussion of, "I talked to Jamie." Okay. Then I call, and I talk to Kay, and I say, "Well, Jamie said so-and-so." At that point, there's three of us involved. But if it's just one-to-one, is that still a serial meeting?
I mean, technically, no. However, I would still caution against...
Hard to achieve.
It's hard to achieve, right? Because you are kind of, even though you say, you, you aren't saying, "Well, Commissioner Bennett said this, and this is what he thinks." If you're saying, "Oh, well, other people are saying this," or you bring up that other argument, it does become a serial meeting. So, I would just avoid it altogether. It's a minefield. It's not, you know, and then, and so, the ways it usually happens is email, social media. I've even told members of, 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 of other bodies, for example, we had something where we had to tell members to stop commenting as a group on items posted on social media. Because, I mean, when the Brown Act was written in 1952, I mean, computers barely existed. So, now, for example, say someone posts something, and then one member of the commission comments under it, and then another member comments, replying to that member of the commission regarding that topic. It's like... replying to that member of the commission regarding that topic. It's like someone says, you know, like, "I thought the commission did an awful job approving this project. How dare they?" And a member of the commission maybe, uh, comments below saying, uh, defending or trying to explain. And then another member of the commission joins in, and then another member of the commission, you've just created a meeting. And, uh, and you've also violated the Brown Act. And so, it's very easy to do, uh, in social media. Next slide. So, that leads me directly to my next topic. Can I post about city business on social media? Yes. But you cannot use, uh, social media to discuss amongst yourselves the business of a specific nature that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. So, you ca- so, you can't necessarily invite the discussion. So, and I get, this doesn't really happen in the city, but other, others, in other cities, I've seen it happen, and I've seen it, and it's, and there are cases across the state where a member maybe have an active social media page where they like to discuss everything that's happening in the city. Well, if they're having a debate with their, members of their city council, for example, that is a meeting, and that's a violation. You can use social media to communicate with constituents. So, it is perfectly permissible to say, "What does the general public think about, uh, you know, the city's, uh, pol- land use policies as to bikes?" And, you know, you can have that discussion with members of the public. You can go to a coffee sh- you can go to a coffee shop here in town and ha- and, you know, ma- you can ask, you know, you can maybe hold an open forum, um, or, you know, chat with members of the public, say, "What is, what did members of the public think about this?" Or mem- people with, members of the public, you can say, "I'm going to be here," or you can post on social media saying, "I will be present between two to four. Please come feel free to ask me anything." You can publicize meetings, say, uh, post about social media to your Twitter, Facebook, whatever, um, saying that the planning commission is, will be discussing this item. Uh, all who, all are welcome to attend, you know, we welcome your input. Permissible. You cannot have one member post on discussion by, uh, other members. I, and this is sort of, this is, it happens a lot. It is a violation. It's the easiest way to violate the Brown Act is to do this. Because it's, and, and it's, it's kind of a, uh, in-public violation because you're just literally doing it on social media where everyone can see. And you can't weigh in with likes or emojis. Actually, there's a, there's a case law on this. It discounts this discussion. So, you might feel like, "Oh, I'm not, I'm not actually commenting. I'm just liking this," or I'm, I'm giving, you know, I, I'm, I'm posting a smiley face. I'm not saying anything. No, you are. And there's case law, and the, uh, and the law has changed to reflect this. Again, not something contemplated in nineteen fifty-two, but as the law has evolved, as, as the technology's evolved, the law, the case law has evolved, and, and the law has evolved specifically to, uh, to do, uh, to admit, come, keep up with the times. Next slide? So, exceptions to definition of a meeting. So, we talked about this. Individual contacts. Um, so, you know, if, uh, Chair Quilisi sees, uh, Chair Lottis on the str- or, uh, Commissioner Lottis on the street, while they're, both of them are out for a walk and they happen to encounter on the street, not a meeting. If, uh, a conference. So, for example, um, this, and this hasn't really happened recently, but there is like, for example, I think next year, there's a Planning Commissioners Academy and, uh, hosted by the League of Cities, and the city often sends members of the planning commission to that academy. It's a conference. It's an exception. It's not a Brown Act meeting. You're there for a conference. The law specifically says you're allowed to do that. A community meeting. So, for example, if the city wanted to hold an open public meeting on something, and you were all present, that's not a, that's not a meeting. You can comment, you can, that sort of stuff. I, I would avoid still discussing amongst yourselves, uh, something that's going to be before, or i- is that before the planning commission? It's not a meeting if three of you show up to the city council, three or four of you show up to the city council and participate in public comment while the city council is comment, uh, is, that's not a meeting. It's a mem- it's a meeting of another legislative body, and that's a specific exception. So, um, for example, if members of the Ojai Planning Commission show up to a meeting of the Ventura County Board of Supervisors, and all three of them are commenting on something, that is not a meeting because it's the, it's the, uh, it's, that falls under the exception. And then, uh, social or ceremonial occasions. So, again, that, it's not a meeting. So, you, all three of you, all five of you can be there for Ojai Day, for, you know, um, ceremonial events. But when I say it's an exception, don't discuss, uh, couns- a commission business at that ceremonial event. So, you can't, you know, retreat during Ojai Day to, you know, somewhere off in the corner and have, and have a discussion about land use. Uh, not that you would. I mean, it would not be a good use of Ojai Day to do that. There are many more interesting things to do, I'm sure. Um, but, that would, so, you can do that. You can go to events together, be, uh, so, I, I will, ultimately, what I'm saying is that if you're in a coffee shop and you see, uh, a member of the commission walk in, you don't have to leave, unless you don't like them, which, you know, that's a separate issue. But, um, you don't have to leave. You can, you, it's, it's a social occasion. It's fine. Just don't talk about the commission, uh, matters before the commission. I'm actually going to pause here. Are there any questions before I move on to the next, from, I, I see, I'm, I'm directing, I guess, because I can see the three commissioners here, but there are, I know there are commissioners,
There they are.
Uh, here virtually as well. So, any?
I have a question.
Yes.
It's not a good practice i- to talk about subs- oops. It's not, it's not a good practice to talk about substance with one other me- member, even if you do not have a serial meeting, meaning you're talking to others. But you could do it.
Yeah, you could do it. We recommend not doing it because you don't know what the person is going to do next.
Right.
And, uh,
If the second person talks to a third person, then you've got a quorum
Right.
that have serially discussed commission business.
Right. And so, uh, that's,
But it per se is not.
It, it's per se is not.
Right.
But it's, as a best practice, I would recommend against it.
Yeah.
In fact, if, the, 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 the Brown Act is meant to discourage, for example, making up your mind in secret. So, and that's, that was one of the reasons it was addressed is that one of the, one of the, in that nineteen fifty-two article, which I think you can find, it's "Our Secret Government." It's available online. Um, I, I've read, it's a good article because it kind of exposes a bunch of the, uh, things that have happened was that, you know, people, their bodies would show up, you know, ups, you know, water boards or, you know, water agencies or something like that where, you know, it was a big deal in nineteen fifty-two, the decisions that these water agencies were making. And, uh, they would show up, they would have all of their votes decided ahead of time. They would just run through the agenda, say, "Hold no public comment." Just go boom, 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 done, walk out, and it'd be a five-minute meeting. And that was not, you know, and, because they set their own rules. And so, um, and, uh, you know, so that, it was a pretty much a practice in the state till nineteen fifty-two. And, I mean, for example, if you've seen, you know, Chinatown or any of those other movies where, you know, that was, uh, things happened in secret. So, this is to prevent that, uh, or we, uh, the, the, the Brown, why the Brown Act is so important. Uh, can you minimize the, so that everyone can see the, okay. So, meeting location. Okay. So, this is, this is interesting because it has changed dramatically since the pandemic. This, the governor has suspended certain aspects of the Brown Act by his initial emergency order. Back in March twenty twenty, when the governor declared a state of emergency in the state, and everything started to close down, there was a specific, uh, uh, executive order that addressed the Brown Act and suspended certain provisions of the Brown Act by, by the governor's emergency authority. But, before we go, go, go to that, let's talk about actually when the meetings must. So, a meeting must occur within the boundaries of the agency, except to comply with a court order or attend a judicial proceeding, inspect real or personal property, attend a meeting with another legislative body, meet with a state or federal representative, discuss regulatory issues, meet in a facility outside of, but, and, but owned by the local agency if the topic relates to the facility, or visit independent legal counsel's office for a closed session. So, that last one very rarely happens. Theoretically, um, the entire city council could travel to my, my, my firm's office
Oh, your firm.
in Pasadena and hold a closed session in our, in our, in our, in our, uh, conference room. We, we would recommend not doing that. Uh, better just to have it here. There's no reason to have it i- in where we are. But it's, you know, it, it's, it's theoretically possible. Um, but must occur within the boundaries of the agency. So, that, it's an important point because I've seen, yeah, that's no longer necessarily true because of the pandemic. And so, uh, I think Steve has been able to, Chair Quilisi has been able to participate from Texas. Uh, Chair Lottis was able to participate from Illinois because of that specific, uh,
Vice Chair Nolan
Yes.
participating from outside the city limits.
Oh, right. That's right. So, right now, she's participating from outside the sim- li- city limits. So, that's still, that's now permissible because of the rules have changed since, uh, since the governor's, uh, order. So, next slide. So, teleconferencing. So, audio, so this is kind of the world we are in right now. A, uh, and I'll tell you an example. I'll give you kind of, uh, wh- where it was before and where we are now. So, uh, teleconferencing, yes, you can have a meeting by teleconference. Um, audio or video are both, uh, connecting the locations. All votes are by roll call. So, I talked about this, uh, at the very beginning, that when we have a, with a roll call vote, as a matter of practice, because now all of our meetings are by audio and video, there's some component. We always have a roll call vote. All locations have to comply with the Brown Act, including public participation. So, this is actually, um, something that has changed. If, for example, in the past, you, before, uh, the pandemic, you wanted to participate in the meeting by telephone from the comfort of your own home, you had to open your home to the public. And so, that's,
That's part of the meeting.
Yeah, because it's part of the meeting. So, that often discouraged people from, uh, phoning in. Uh, but there were times, for example, I, I recall a time where a member of a city council was traveling at a conference, and she participated. So, she actually participated in the conference, um, she participated in the city council meeting from the conference. She did it in the lobby of the hotel, and said on the call, she said, "I am in the public, public lobby of a hotel. Anyone who wishes to can, I'll, I'm at this location. Anyone who is, we're more than welcome." I don't think anyone showed up, but you had to make that. That, that rule has now changed because of the pandemic, and obviously, um, with social distancing and, and the coronavirus, the, it was quickly realized that since all meetings, if you recall, all meetings at one point were on Zoom before we started coming back in person, the, that rule was frozen. So, that rule as, uh, now you're allowed to participate remotely. You don't have to open it up to the public. Next. And so, really quickly, the, the notice and agenda must identify the remote location. That rule has also changed. So, you'll notice that when, even when we were on Zoom, and when some of you participate, we don't publish your home addresses of where you're calling in from. Um, however, in the pre-pandemic times, if you were calling in from a hotel or somewhere else outside of the city, we'd list that as well as one of the meeting places. Okay. Uh, next slide. So, um, this is a little bit hard to see, but direct, different meetings and different requirements. So, the, this is all the rules and staff, this is something staff does. Um, kind of the, the hoops that staff, or the, the rules the staff has to follow, uh, when it comes to, for example, publishing the agenda, setting the meeting date and time, and allowing public comment on items not on the agenda. So, for a regular meeting, the item, agenda must be published seventy-two hours before this meeting. Um, oftentimes, practically speaking, that happens a lot quicker because we have to publish the agenda in the newspaper, and the newspaper has its own deadline. So, that in effect becomes the city's deadline. So, uh, Lucas, in this case, as an example, our rule is seventy-two hours, but we also have to submit it to the, uh, the newspaper. And so, what is our newspaper deadline?
Yeah, so that's ten days.
Ten days. So, our functional deadline, even though the law says we have, we can go up to seventy-two hours, is ten days because we have to put notice because the newspaper has its own deadline. So, how do we set that? So, we set meeting date, time, and place by resolution or an ordinance of the majority during a meeting. So, way back when, um, at some point, the, uh, planning commission of the city affixed, uh, the first and third Wednesdays of the month at six P M. as the, by resolution, as the date and time for the city's planning commission. They chose to have two meetings. Technically, only legal primus have one. Um, some, some cities only have one planning commission meeting. Some cities have two. So, this was done a long, long time ago. You, as a commission, could theoretically change this and change the date. But I don't, I don't, I think staff would probably have something to say about that, uh, given that their timelines. But theoretically, you could, by majority vote, change the time and date if you wanted to. But I think that would be, I would recommend against that without asking staff first or checking with staff because they have their own deadlines.
I also thought that that was through ordinance, but is it not?
Um, so, yes, it's by, in, in this city, it's by ordinance, but you can, it says first and second, uh, first and third Wednesday, which is in the, in the, in the, in the, in the specific section. I believe it's Title One of the city's code. But you can change the time. Yeah. And, for example, if we wanted to, for example, cancel meetings, um, and some, you know, oftentimes, I believe the second meeting in December is usually canceled. Right?
Not always, I mean.
Not always, but sometimes it is.
Not in recent memory.
Right. Uh, or, for example, if, if the meeting falls on a public holiday, like, for example, the fir- the first meeting in January falls on January first, because January first is on a Wednesday, then that meeting would be canceled. So, that, that's built in for that, right? Um, what about a special meeting? So, a special meeting, the agenda deadline is twenty-four hours before the meeting. So, this is set by the presiding officer, by, or majority vote during or outside of a meeting. So, a special meeting, um, is something that, uh, is you, there are rules governing what can be done at special meetings, but a special meeting is basically done, um, you have a twenty-four hour agenda deadline on that one. But you can't simply just ca- keep calling special meetings. There's rules, and I think, I, we, we'll go into what you can do at a special meeting, what you can't. Special meetings mostly apply to mem- uh, the city council. Um, so, for example, city council can't, can introduce items at a special meeting, but it can't approve ordinances at a special meeting. Um, it, there are certain things that couns- the council can do during a special meeting and can't do. And so, I'm not going to go too much in detail because it doesn't really apply to the commission. Because the commission doesn't pass ordinances. It makes recommendations or approves permits, which it can do at a special meeting. Uh, an emergency meeting. So, this is as soon as possible. You get, uh, notice to media outlets within one hour prior, and it's set by majority vote or outside of a special, uh, outside of a meeting. Um, again, emergency, uh, if I recall correctly, and I may be wrong in this, I believe at one point during the wildfire season a few years ago, the city council held an emergency meeting, um, where they, uh, they passed certain things during that emergency meeting to address the fact that the, you know, there was an, there was a wildfire in the city that was way back in, what, twenty eighteen? I believe it's,
Uh, twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen, I think.
Yeah, that,
December twenty seventeen was the Thomas Fire.
Exactly. During the Thomas Fire. That, that's, that's the criteria for an emergency meeting. And then adjourn it. So, if a meeting is adjourned, and we talked about this, if meeting's adjourned, uh, you don't need to repost the agenda if the, uh, adjournment is less than five days. So, it's set by an order of adjournment adopted by any mem- by any members present at, at, or at a prior, regular, or special meeting. And it depends on if it's a regular or special meeting. So,
It sounds more like a recess.
It sounds, it's basically a recess. But, for example, if we continue to a date certain, if we adjourn to a date certain, we then, um, can, uh, do, we don't have to repost the agenda. If we continue a date uncertain, we have to go back through the ten-day reposting period. And so, if there's nothing being changed, we're just simply continuing to a date certain, we don't have to repost. And so, I'll, I'll, I, I, I've said that in the past few weeks here. We've continued to a date certain is that we've,
That applies to the agenda as well as to individual items on the agenda.
Exactly. Uh, next slide, Lucas? So, content of the agenda. So, the agenda you'll see is available. You, you're emailed a copy of it, plus it's available at the front, uh, at, at every meeting. And so, the agenda usually has, and this, uh, has to, goes in this format. Call to order, the role, uh, which includes, uh, the, uh, Chair Quilisi opens the meeting. Uh, it's practice in our meetings to start with, um, the pledge of allegiance. Then there's a roll call. Then you approve the agenda, and then you approve the minutes, and then, Then you approve the agenda, and then you approve the minutes, and then public comment on items not on the agenda. So to, today, for example, we had, had public comment on items not on the agenda. Then we had consent items, usually matters on consent. Are unless the, are items that are, if there are four matters on consent, it's one item, it's passed as a group. You can ask to pull items from the consent calendar, which pulls them into the regular agenda. But if it's part of consent. For example, if there are three items on consent, it's a motion to approve the items on the consent calendar. It's not. I'm approve item two on the consent calendar, I approve item three. It, they're all taken as one. If you wanna pull them out of consent, you can ask. Uh, during the, during the call to or, uh, during the roll call, or during the call to order, or the approval of the agenda. To uh, pull an item from the consent calendar.
Happens regularly at city council.
It does. It, it doesn't happen so often here, but it does happen regularly at city council. And then discussion items. So items with a brief description of each item, and then the future agenda items. So this is how uh, the agenda is structured. Every city has its own quirks of how we do it. Um, for example, in our items, we talk about uh, future agenda items. And then we also have a section for commissioner member reports, where commissioners can talk about things. And then we also have, for example, in our agenda, we've added city council liaison. Okay, next slide. So what has to be in an agenda? So has to contain public comment for all items on the agenda. A brief general description of each item, not to exceed twenty words. And this is actually more complicated than it sounds. Because we have to basically wordsmith something uh, to reflect everything that's being done. We have to, yeah, and I can see Sherry uh, uh.
Hard to do.
It's her responsibility to wordsmith these things to fit that, and, and so many of these things are fairly complicated items. So kind of cramming them into less than twenty words is difficult. Uh, we have to publish the time and location of the meeting and how to res- request disability. Related modification or accommodation. And so now also agendas also must include. How to view the uh, meeting remotely through the Zoom link. And so we do that in our agenda as well. So if you look at, for example. The front page of, of this agenda, there is a, under, it says important note regarding live hearing participation via virtual teleconferencing. Public commenters, and there's a link posted there. And that's now required as part of the agenda of one alternative for members of the public to participate. Next slide. Okay, so, public comment. So every agenda for regular meetings has to have an opportunity for members of the public. To directly com- address the legislative body on any item of interest to the public before or during the legislative body's consideration of the item. That is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. Provided that no action shall be taken on the item not appearing on the agenda unless the action is otherwise authorized by subdivision B of. Of sec- of the government code. So uh, a couple key things there. And we'll talk about subdivision B, but a couple key things there. That you cannot not have public hearing. Occasionally, we'll, I'll, you know, it doesn't happen so much with Chair Quillsey. But occasionally I've been at meetings where I've had to remind the chair, chair, it's time to open a public hearing. And uh, uh. During that meeting, people, you, you cannot as a body say, we're not gonna listen to public comment. I mean, you can, you don't have to listen when people talk. But you can't collectively say, we're not taking public comment on this. You must do that. Um, the public comment is three minutes. And so for three minutes, they can, the members of public can uh, discuss. Commission has discretion to consider wh- when they go beyond three minutes. Oftentimes, as a matter of courtesy, we do. Um, but you know, the, on that, you'll see, there is a green light and then it goes to a yellow when I think it's thirty seconds. And then red when they've exceeded their, their three minutes. And so as a courtesy, we usually let people go on, but three minutes is, you know, people. Because eh, out of fairness to everyone else and mindful of everyone's time, including members of the public, we don't necessarily. We discourage people from going, addressing the, the, the committee, the commission for twenty minutes, thirty minutes. There's no filibuster uh, um, from the public, let's put it that way.
And, and there have been a lot of city council meetings where there's twenty or more people that wanna speak on a particular item. And the chair will limit discussion to two minutes per person.
Yes.
So as not to run into the early morning hours.
Exactly. And to give everyone a chance to speak. Um, and so um, the other thing I wanna point out is that. It's within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. So if a person is here commenting. They're, what they're commenting on is something within the subject matter jurisdiction. So the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission is land use and zoning within the city. So all comments technically have to fall within that subject matter. So. Theoretically speaking, if somebody came up here and s- and railed at this commission or want, wanted to. Uh, talk to this commission about some public art that was installed, it's outside of the subject matter jurisdiction of this, of the legislative body. Um, that's the arts commission's purview. Same thing with if they wanted to talk about um, uh, parks and recreation. Again, outside of the uh, uh, or if they wanted to talk about it, something go, related to the historic preservation. And designation of historic monuments. Now, technically, that, there is an argument to be made. Uh, that that's part of this uh, zoning code, uh, the historic preservation. So I, I think it probably is within the subject matter jurisdiction, but it oftentimes may be better addressed to the historic preservation commission. And many times, recommendations from the HPC come to this commission. So it's likely more than that. That's a bad example. But if, for example, if they're complaining about um, um, recreational activities uh, being offered by the city. Why not volleyball? Why not this? It's with outside of the subject matter jurisdiction. The commission doesn't have to take that comment. So public comment, so two types, items on the agenda and items not on the agenda. In our public comment, uh. In our agenda, we take items not on the agenda first. And so today we had public comment on items not on the agenda and people spoke. And then there's items on the agenda. So. Important thing here, may not take action on items brought during the general public comment. And Chair Quillsey reads this when we open general public comment for items not on the agenda. You can hear stuff, but you can't, um, you know. Uh, for, and I'll, on the, I'll use an example. Somebody during general public comment says, uh, commission, um, you know, I'm very upset with this business. They have a CUP to do this and they're clearly violating this. It's not on your agenda today, but I'm asking you, urging you to revoke the CUP. You can't then turn around and try to revoke the CUP right there. Um, uh, because it's not on the agenda. It's been, it's something that's been offered during general public comment, you cannot take action. So no action can be taken. You can, you can say, thank you, uh, we note that, we're, we'll, we'll ask staff to, to look into that, but that's it. So there's exceptions. Emergency situation, so floods, fires, strikes. Again, this is something that applies mostly to council. Who are taking emergency decisions. Uh, you need a two-thirds vote. So you can add it to the agenda. It came up, if it came up after the posting and requires immediate action. And this is very rare. This is mostly a city council thing. If something happened after the agenda was posted. And it required immediate attention from the council, uh, from, from the, uh, the city council, there would be a, a two-thirds vote. Uh, to, to add it to the agenda. Um, this mostly comes up in city council. Uh, even though, while, what, what the commission does is very important, planning commission. Very rare that there is a land use emergency that requires immediate action. Um, but it could happen theoretically. Yeah. Next slide. So general public comment. So this is our advice to you of how to respond to general public comment. So there's four really appropriate answers. Ask a clarifying question, brief, briefly respond, refer to the matter to staff. Or ask to agendize for a subsequent discussion. So let's talk about, for example, someone came in and said, they're complaining that. You know, this business is violating their CUP. Their CUP says they cannot serve uh, alcohol outside of these hours. And I clearly see them out, serving out alcohol. Ask a clarified question. What is this business you're talking about? Um, respond to the comment. You can say, well, thank you, this, the commission has noted this concern. You can refer the matter to staff, say, um, staff, can you look into the. Of allegations or issues raised by this person? Or you can ask that, uh, you know, uh, you can ask Lucas. As the, as the director to say, can you add this uh, review of this item to a future agenda, agenda item? And he will do so. Stay on topic, right? And then this is uh, out of um.
Let me ask a question.
Yes.
On that, so on the general public comment, is, are, is this before the mea- before the meeting or is this on a specific item?
So this is general public comment before.
Before the meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, because.
At, at the beginning of the meeting, before we have the consent item.
Right.
Yeah.
But there's actually another appropriate response is, is to just listen.
Yes, yes, ob- obviously. You don't have to respond. Yeah, yeah. I, I, that, yeah, I, I should have made that clear, I'm sorry. You don't have to respond. You can listen and uh, move on. Yeah, so you, you absolutely don't have to respond. But if you so choose to respond. These are the four ways you should respond. Um, we.
I think the philosophy there is that if you engage in extended conversation with something that's off agenda topic. You may be giving the public the idea that you have already made a decision in your own mind on that. And if it comes up later on another agenda, then you're kind of compromised.
Right. No, there shouldn't be back and forth, but.
Eh, exactly.
Understood.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, the right to public comment. So we talked about this a little bit. So the city can establish reasonable regulations to ensure that its intent is carried out. So you can limit time. So in this case, we have three minutes, but uh, if there are too many people, we can go down to two minutes. Uh, you can limit the numbers. Minutes per speaker, per topic, can, that can be adjusted. For example, if we are talking about a very contentious issue. And you know, we have fifty people with speaker cards to talk on this, you can decide, well, to accommodate all fifty of these people and to make sure everyone is, is heard. We can limit uh, discussion on this to one minute. You can decide that as a commission. Uh, you must provide at least twice the allotted time to persons using a translator. Um, like, this doesn't happen that often, but it does happen in, um, other cities, it happens elsewhere that you have to give. Um, that you can requi- you may require, uh, you may, you may require speaker cards. But you cannot, you, you mustn't, you not require speaker card. So you can say, you know, everyone who has to speak. Had, must ha- have a speaker card, but you can't say, um, uh, only speak, only, only those with a speaker card can speak. Uh, you, you can't say that, okay, if you didn't turn in, turn in your speaker card, you're done. You can't say anything. That person can still speak.
Question?
Yes.
Um, at, at one point, I, oh, I think it's on here now, it's on the speaker card. It says, you have to, you're supposed to check resident or non-resident, and I think that means within or outside the city limits.
Yes.
Um, is that required or is that, is that at our discretion?
It's, it's at the city's discretion. So, um, it's, I mean. People sometimes identify themselves as a resident of the city. So I, you know, I, I'm, I'm a long timer resident of the city, I live at this address. Or I live on this street, or I live in this neighborhood. Some people say, well, I'm not, I'm not a resident of the city, however, but I'm affected by the city. I live just outside of Ohio. I live in, you know, Minor Soaks or Casita Springs or something like that, and this decision will affect me. And so that, that's just one way of kind of, uh, it's, it's an additional. Um, data staff has put on there. Uh, so for the, for members, and so, you know. Sometimes, you know, I've had this happen where someone, uh, I've been at another meeting where some, uh, in another city where somebody has complained. About um, city services and they're sa- and, you know, they, they went on and on and on, and then later discovered they don't actually live in the city. And they should be addressing their concerns to the county cuz it's a non-incorporated, even though their address had that city. City's actually not in their, it's not part of the city's jurisdictional area. And so this is off, it's a clarifying issue. Uh, did I see your hand, Commissioner Bennett? No? Any, any other questions while we're pause for questions? Any, what about from the uh, digital? Nope. Okay. And Commissioner Nolan, Commissioner Trent, if you have questions, yeah, feel free to just jump in anytime. Um, I know we have you minimized, so, but uh.
No worries. Thank you.
Yeah, so I think Sherry monitoring it, so she'll be able to.
Speak up.
Yeah. Okay, um, so let's go to the next slide, please. So, okay, this is one of the, we, we're talking about reasonable regulations. So three-minute time limit. Um, upheld where unlimited time for the bo- so you have an unlimited time to speak. And so, but the, uh. Members of the public only have three, um, uh, three minutes or however many you so choose. So there's no time limit on yours. However, I would caution that at some point, everyone wants to go home. So maybe, maybe we don't want, if you're a member of the uh, um. Commission and you wanna speak for one hour about a topic, I would recommend, again, for decorum purposes, maybe not. Um, but technically you can. Uh, there's a two-minute time limit unreasonable. Um, so. This is all from case law. Case law has fa- the, the courts have found that a two-minute time limit is un- unreasonable for evidentiary presentation. So for example, if it's a, somebody giving evidence of, uh, a, an applicant talking about something.
Uh, we typically let the applicants have more time.
Exactly. We, we let the app, so two minutes, for example, that was imposed for the applicant to uh, advocate for their CUP or give, you know. Um, talk about their application was held to be unreasonable. You can, the most important thing is you can depart from limitations. As reasonable discretion. So it depends on the comp- complexity of the item. So if it's, it's a very, very complex item. That people just don't, are, are, are very passionate about or don't understand, you can, you as a, you have the discretion, okay, you, you know. Go ahead and, and speak for a little bit longer cuz I, clearly you're passionate about this. Nobody wants to be rude and, you know, at the three-minute mark say, okay, stop talking. Um, there may be s- s- times where that happens, but it's discretionary. And I think the commission. Understands when to exercise his discretion, when not to exercise his discretion. Um, you can, for example, have it. You can say that anybody who's already commented on this item cannot re-comment on the same item. Cuz the law says you're allowed to comment, but it doesn't say you have unlimited right to comment. So I've been in meetings where it's a very contentious issue. And the same person kept coming up over and over again. And uh, on the same issue, right? And uh. The body adopted rules saying, if you've already co- you have, you can comment once. And then you're done for that item. Um, rare happens, but you know, eh, there, there, again, it's discretionary. Um, you can require speaker cards, but you cannot require, for example, the public to provide names or other information. So sometimes as a courtesy, you know, people write down their names, we, we, there's no requirement. So members of the public who could attend. The meeting don't have to write down, don't have to, I mean, they don't have to put down the names of their, uh, 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 on the speaker card. In fact, they could just leave the speaker card blank with, except for which item they wanna talk about. And that's it. Um, next slide. So this is best practices. Speakers should not be interrupted unless it's speech not protected by the First Amendment. And so, um, this is something that doesn't happen in this city, or it doesn't happen before this commission. But. As commissioners, it is First Amendment speech for someone to call you all sorts of names in the world. Uh, someone to say, you know, it's, uh, I believe you all are crooks, I believe, you know, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, I'm, 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 demand you be fired. All of that is protected First Amendment speech. It is not protected First Amendment speech for someone to say, uh, uh, I, I disagree with you. I'll be waiting for you outside, uh, and we'll handle this, uh, handle this, han- handle this the, the, the hard way. Which is actually something I've heard say in, in a public comment. So I'm, this is a specific reference. And uh, that's not public, uh, that's not protected speech, that's a threat. And uh, criminal threats are not protected in the First Amendment. And there are been, n- never happened in this city, but um, there have been certain circumstances where police have been present. And we've directed the police to remove the commentator mid uh, comment because they have graduated from protected First Amendment speech. To violent threats which are not, which are unlawful and not protected. But again. Names, allegations of corruption, allegations, and this is something that I occasionally have to remind other, in other cities, members of council about. Is that, uh, they are allowed to call you whatever they want, they're allowed to allege whatever they want. Um, it's protected. Uh, it's made during a public hearing, so actually the libel rules do not apply. Um, this is protected speech. The only time where you can cut someone off is if they're au- if it's. The only time where you can cut someone off is if they're au, if it's outside of the subject matter jurisdiction of the body or if they're making a criminal threat. So what about, when should we cut this individual off? And so I'm going to go through these, um, and you can give me an answer. When they get loud, should we cut them off?
No.
When the vice mayor feels insulted, should we cut them off? When they give a silent Nazi salute, should we cut them off? When they use a swear word, should we cut them off? When they use their, when their three minutes are up? Maybe, yes, right? It's discretionary. We can choose to. When they cause a disruption of the meeting?
Yes.
Yes. So again, disruption of the meeting is important here. Um, and, because this is something that has come up very recent, uh, it happens a lot. And it may happen, you know, we haven't had full public, packed public meetings in a long time because of COVID. Uh, but, you know, for example, someone can call, disrupt the business of the meeting. So they can be removed from the meeting. They can be prevented from speaking. And when they say disrupt the business of the meeting, um, they, it, it, it's, for example, if they're just incoherently yelling or, uh, during, and this is something that has happened, if they're incoherently yelling, that's a disruption. Uh, the silent Nazi salute, um, protected. And this actually is coming out of a case outs, yeah, I believe, Los Angeles, where a gentleman stood in the back and, uh, gave a Nazi salute and, uh, council directed him to be removed. Council was found to have violated his First Amendment rights because that is protected speech. Uh, same thing with swear words. Um, we talk about decorum, but, uh, obscenities are protected. So just as a, you know, that doesn't necessarily mean that, um, everyone should just preface everything they say and pepper it with swear words, but obscenities are protected. So you can't cut off somebody for, you know, you know.
Simply for.
Yeah, exactly. You can't be like, think of the children and stop, tell them to stop because that's, that's a, you have a First Amendment right to do so. Um, next slide. Okay, so the public rights. So this is something that, um, this is something that commissioners need to know is what are the rights of the public? So the c, public has the right to photograph and record meetings. So, um, unless the, they make a reasonable finding that the recording cannot be continued because of noise, illumination, disruption, um, you are allowed to. So somebody can sit in the back here and take out their phone, turn on their camera and record this whole thing. It's to, they're, the, it's completely lawful. Um, they can't, uh, broadcasting too. Uh, the press can sit there and sit in the gallery and they can, as long as it's not disruptive to the meeting itself. Um, so, uh, for example, a member of the press, or for example, if somebody, somebody sits out there and records and they're live streaming or whatever, and they're giving a running commentary while the commissioner is doing his business and you can hear them, it's disrupting, that's not allowed. They're just standing silently and recording, completely permissible. You can't limit public access? So, um, there are a variety of rules here, but the, for example, in this city, City Hall is open to the public, uh, for the purposes of the, the meeting. So the City Hall technically is closed. It closes at 5:00 PM, but this meeting is, this room is open. Members of public can enter. There's reasonable time.
Fire marshal capacity.
Exactly. That's, that's my next, uh, reasonable time, place and manner restrictions permitted. So, um, most of the time, for example, if it's a very packed meeting, we exceed the fire marshal. We can, we have an overflow usually. Some cities already have, are equipped with overflow rules. And I don't recall if we've ever had to do an overflow in this.
Out on the patio.
Out on the patio.
There's a patio on the back.
Yeah, that's right.
We anticipate a large crowd.
Yeah, one we do. Or we'll move, we'll move it to a location where there'll be, and so for example, I'll use the, uh, example of the city council. They were holding their meetings, the Libby Park Bowl, um, to allow for greater access. That still are, right? So closed sessions, okay, so this doesn't necessarily apply to the, uh, planning commission. This is closed session is a prerogative of the city council, so I'll just go through this very quickly. But this is a narrow exception to the open meeting requirement. It's allowing meetings without the public or the press. And it's, there are closed session is only things that are identified by state law. And so only people who are allowed in the closed session are the board and necessary staff. So the lawyer is always in the closed session most of the time. And unless it's a discussion about the lawyer himself, then they're not. But, uh, it does happen. Um, there's a specified agenda id, format and a reporting out requirement. So if you ever watch a closed session, if you ever watch a city council meeting, they, uh, at some point, the mayor will ask the attorney to report out from closed session and the, and the attorney will say something along the lines of council considered in closed session, the item so and so, no, no action was taken, no reportable action was taken. You, we recommend, don't go into closed session without legal assistance. Uh, and all discussions in closed session are confidential and may not be discussed outside of closed session. And again, this doesn't really, planning commissions don't hold closed sessions, but s, everything the city council discusses in that closed session is confidential. It's a violation of the law to leak things from the closed session. So, uh, I will go through these very quickly because they don't necessarily apply to this commission, but these are the exceptions. Real estate negotiations, when the city is negotiating for the sale or purchase of a real property. Uh, pending litigation, when the attorney has to, uh, brief the city about either existing litigation that's happening or anticipated or threatened litigation. Liability claims, personnel matters, for example, if the, the city is considering, you know, uh, appointment, evaluation, dismissal and release. And it's only those employees directly reportable to the boards of the city council. So for example, city manager evaluations, all those things happen in closed session. Labor negotiations also happen in closed session. And then threats to public services, if it's like an emergency threat or terrorist threat, happens in closed session. Next slide. And I'm, I'm going through this quickly because it doesn't really apply to this, uh, commission. Uh, narrow exception, this, so the closed session is, actually, I think you went back. Go forward. Okay, so other issues. You ca, well, we talked about this really quickly. You cannot require the public to provide names or other information as a condition of attending. Uh, you can't demand when someone is speaking to say, what's your name, sir? Uh, you can have a sign-in sheet, uh, if, it, but it has to say that signing in is voluntary. So on that speaker card, they don't have to fill out their name if they don't want to. They may choose to because it, you know, this, my name is, you know, so and so and I'm a resident of, you know, longtime resident of the city. Uh, access to documents. So they have to be distributed, uh, anything that's given to a majority of the council has to be made available to the public. So materials by staff are distributed prior to or during the meeting. Uh, must be ma, made available to the public during the meeting. Uh, materials by others during the meeting must be made available to the public after the meeting. So for example, if the, uh, commission heard a presentation by the, uh, the, the city's consultant on the general plan, they had a handout, that handout then has to be distributed to the public after the meeting or made available, usually posted online. Uh, voting, no action by secret ballot. Um, so you can't do a secret ballot, ev, or even if you do, for example, a straw poll, it has to be out in the public. You have to report all votes, including abstentions of all members present for the action. So you have to, uh, in the minutes, you'll see recorded, uh, voting abstentions and so forth. Um, again, this doesn't really apply to this commission because it doesn't take action on salary, but you can only take action on salaries, uh, at regular meetings and you have to orally report the summary of salary schedules prior to the vote. Uh, not really relevant for this commission because this commission doesn't decide on salaries. So what happens if you violate the Brown Act? Uh, either collectively or as an individual? And this is pretty serious. Um, a criminal action is possible. The, the DA, uh, has in, in the past, uh, not in the city, but in other cities, uh, taken action, uh, on filed charges for violation of the Brown Act. Um, they can either do, uh, they can also do, uh, civil action. So the law says the district attorney or any other interested person, uh, can sue to determine the applicability of the Brown Act, um, uh, and whether an action has been violated. So for example, if I, uh, a member of the public, believe that the city is violating the Brown Act by not listing a certain item and then discussing it, I have to first send a cease and desist letter within nine months of the violation. That, once, once I have raised the idea that there's a violation of the Brown Act, the city has to respond within 30 days to cure the alleged violation. So there's a safe harbor provision. Um, by cure, they also commit to ceasing and desisting. And then after that 30-day safe harbor where they have the right to cure or fix any violation, I get 15, I have to file a lawsuit alleging the violation within 15 days. So mandamus action. So this is something that, for example, if, uh, council voted on approving something or this commission voted on approving something and they va, and I believe they violated the Brown Act to, um, to, uh, when they, when they went through the process of approval, I can bring what's called a writ of, uh, mand, uh, writ of mandate or a mandamus action to declare the action taken by the, uh, the commission or the council null and void. So I have to, before I do this, I have to make a written demand to cure and correct. And so they still get that, they still get a 90-day period of safe harbor. But if they haven't fixed it within that 90 days, I have to, I can file a lawsuit to invalidate whatever action they've taken. And so, uh, I'm going through this quickly because it rarely happens, but, um, it does happen. I've dealt with, uh, and Matt and I have dealt with a significant number of these, these type of lawsuits. What happens when the court determines a Brown Act violation is, occurs? So first, above all else, whatever the action, the commission took is nullified. So it's not worth it to violate the Brown Act to get something over the line because the remedy is it's going to not happen anyway. Um, the city has to pay the plaintiff attorney's fees. There are civil penalties and then potentially criminal penalties. So if I sue the city, if the city, for example, has viol, granted a CUP and I believe that they violated the Brown Act by not properly noticing the item, not properly agendizing the item, and they've, they, and I, I sent the cease and desist letter, they didn't cure in time. I filed a lawsuit. Uh, the court ruled in my favor. The granting of the CUP is immediately nullified. I, the city has to pay me all of my fees that I incurred in bringing this lawsuit. And then the court can then impose the civil penalties on the city and refer the case out to civil prosecution, criminal prosecution. So it is pretty serious. So that kind of ends my presentation. I've gone on for, uh, an hour and, and change. So I want to just really quickly take questions if there are any questions. But, uh, I appreciate, thank you for listening to me. Um, I am available for questions if you don't want to ask them here or if you want to, uh, if you think of something tonight, uh, you can email me. Obviously, it's a one-on-one communication, so don't violate the Brown Act when asking about the Brown Act. Um, so don't CC all the members of the commission, uh, when you, when you ask me that question. But, um, yes, so I will, I'm happy to take questions now. I can take questions later. Um, both myself and the city attorney, Matt Summers, are available to take questions at any time. And you can ask me during the meeting, you can ask me offline, you can ask me by email. Yeah, and so, any questions?
Not here.
No, from staff?
All right.
No. Thank you. Yeah. I'll try, so.
Thank you very much.
That's the conclusion of my presentation.
All right. And if you do, if questions occur to you after the fact, contact Nikhil.
Yes.
Um, I'm sure Lucas knows how to get in touch with Nikhil. All right, let's move on to item three, general plan update, safety element.
You can, so this is a discussion item, doesn't necessarily have to have public comment. I, I would recommend you, perhaps if.
Sure.
Members of the public want to comment.
Sure, if someone, is there a member of the public who wishes to comment on item two?
Yes.
Um, so this is basically a question for council. Um, one area you didn't cover really is communication of council or legislative bodies with the public that's not transparent. So for example, I have witnessed in council meetings, members or public sitting next to me texting with a council member. It was clear, this person texts, that person responded, this person texts, that person responded. Not a transparent communication. Now, that was three or four years ago. Um, I actually did a FOIA request on that, which the city denied. And I could have sued, but it's a lot of money, so I let it go. I'd be curious about your thoughts on that, particularly given now council members, et cetera, can be somewhere else where no one can actually observe what they're doing. They could easily be texting or emailing or whatever with anyone without the public being involved in that conversation.
So I am, I'm not, this is a good instructive experience. Uh, I'm not a member of the commission, so technically I'm not obliged to answer questions. However, if, should the commission direct me to answer that question, I can answer that question. Okay, so, um, on the point about communications, um, with the public. Uh, communications with the public, uh, if it's a, one council member discussing with another member of the public, that is not a violation of, uh, of the open meeting laws, if it's just one-on-one communication. Um, however, uh, as to your point about whether that communication is public, the Public Records Act applies to, um, since 2017, uh, there was a case, uh, titled City of San Jose where the, versus Superior Court, where the, uh, Superior Court versus City of San Jose, where the Supreme Court found that, uh, council members' electronic communications, electronic communications of, of members of a legislative body are subject to the Public Records Act. So, um, I can't address that specific issue regarding your, uh, your point about that particular, but I will say that that is subject, since 2017, electronic communications, email, phone, text messages are subject to the Public Records Act.
Even if they're on private communication.
Yes.
Devices, if they're being used during.
Now, if, if they're being used for city business and it's a, uh, communication that relates to city business, doesn't matter if it's a private email, private phone, it's still subject to the Public Records Act. And this is the law since 2017.
If you send an email to a member of the city council.
Yes.
That email becomes a public document.
Yes.
That's what I, uh, im, implied or, or was trying to convince the city of Ojai. And, you know, they basically denied it. And my options were to hire a lawyer, go through the lawsuit process, et cetera. I'm surprised actually that, that commissions and council in the city don't require no cell phones, et cetera, et cetera, during public meetings because it is a potential rattle, right?
Yeah. Well, I, 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 I mean, that's, that's discretionary to the council. I will just say that since 2017, the law, the, the court, the Supreme Court considered this, the California Supreme Court, and ha, upheld this particular provision to say that, uh, private communications are subject to the Public Records Act, made from private devices.
I was aware of that too, but it was prior to 2017.
I have a question also.
Go ahead, please.
No, Molly, um, I too observed that a few years ago with a council person. And it was, it was apparent, but not provable, that they were getting advice in the process of a discussion going on an issue from somebody in the room. It would seem to me that the council person would legally have to say transparently that they are receiving resource information at the moment during the meeting as they have a binder in front of them, which we know about. They have documents which we know about, but we don't know about what's going in their ear or their eyes. And that really bothered us.
Um, so I, I can't really address the specifics of that particular circumstance. All I'll say is that, um, certain types of advice, uh, are protected by attorney-client privilege. So, uh, communications between, uh, members of this commission and myself are member, uh, or communications between the city attorney, um, and members of city council and members of this commission and members of staff, where the city attorney is involved in communicating and giving legal advice, are, are, are subject to attorney-client privilege and not public information.
It was obvious this particular person was typing on their iPad.
I, again, I, I honestly can't disc, I, I have, I can't address a specific circumstance. I, I, I mean, if.
It doesn't feel very transparent.
Yeah, I, and again, the, it's, it's discretionary. Um, there are ways of remedying this. Um, there are ways of remedying this, either through, through the courts or through a public records request. But as to a specific circumstance.
How about council?
Beyond the purview of this presentation.
How about council or commission protocols?
I'm sorry, what?
What about it?
What if the city established, the city council established protocols that said digital communications with outside people during the meetings is not a good idea and prohibited?
Yes, they, they could do that.
Why would do that?
All right, any additional questions for the city attorney on item two? Great, let's go on to item three, general plan update, the safety element. Uh, Lucas?
Yes, thank you. Uh, Lucas Seibert, Community Development Director of City of Ojai. So the, as this commission will, will remember, we've been going through each of these elements as they currently exist with the general plan. We currently have, obviously, a general plan update that we're going through. And, um, following that, that process currently. You know, the, the purpose of tonight is to kind of allow this commission, once again, to, to soak in this existing element that's been in place since nineteen ninety-one, if I recall correctly. So this element's been around for roughly thirty years. It's, it's certainly in need of update. Um, there are certain bodies that will be, agencies that will be, um, reporting and providing comments on this as well as we move forward, such as Cal Fire certainly will be, um, providing comment, as well as the commission, council obviously being the legislative body for this. The, the piece that I, I think is, um, important to kind of, to wrap your head around is the safety element includes natural disasters such as floods, landslides, dam failure, earthquakes, wildfires, liquefaction, um, nuclear or radioactive emergencies. Some of those we see on a kind of more frequent basis, some not at all. But certainly something that still needs to be added into and addressed and identified within the, the element itself. And I wanted to just kinda, just to touch kind of on a twenty thousand foot level, the way in which this element was, um, put together, it includes goals, policies, and then implementing programs. And that's kind of threaded throughout the, the, the rear portion of this element. You know, as in working with the consultant, um, moving this process forward with the general plan update, certainly we'll be looking at these existing goals, policies, and implementing, uh, programs, and identifying and, um, looking to the community as well as this commission and council as to revisions, modifications, potential removal in cer- in certain cases, as we, as we move forth, forward through the process. So at this point, it's really kind of a, an opportunity to comment, provide information, insight. And those, those pieces of information, um, from this commission, I'll forward those to, uh, the consultant as well. So with that, if you have any questions of me.
Right.
Or, and this is really kind of an opportunity for discussion.
Okay, uh, well, I'd like to have questions for staff. We have public comment, and then we can go back to deliberations and discussion by the commission. So any questions for staff as a precursor to a more detailed discussion of the safety element?
And I'll also note that today I also sent a piece of information. Chair Quilisi had asked for some, some clarifying information regarding one of the exhibits that was identified within the safety element. That information was provided to the commission and it's been placed, um, in, in the front entry of this, uh, this meeting. So.
Good.
It's been provided for the public as well.
And just as a, uh, on the questions issue, um, when staff, remember this is an old document, so things have changed. And so the purpose is an update, which staff is doing, uh, with the consultant. So I think I wouldn't, I would caution relying on this document, asking, you know, what's the stat? Like, the, the, some, a lot of these things, as you saw in the last time, we looked at the circulation element, quite a few of it is, is no longer relevant or changed, and that's why we're in the process of updating. And so like stylistic changes and stuff like that are probably, this is, this, consider this sort of a, more of a historical document rather than what's going to, what's gonna look like in the future.
At the same time, after thirty years passage of time.
Yeah.
References to specific parts of the code or to state law are inevitably, some of them going to be out of date or will have changed, or will have been deleted, or whatever.
Correct.
So that would be a general part of the update of this, that I would expect that the, that the consultant would already know about and would make corrections. But if I find anything like that, I'll give those comments to Lucas as well.
I have a question about. About, um, technology and specifically, um, uh, cell towers and self, cell phones, which when this was drafted were not nearly as important to people as the.
Were the internet for that matter.
Excuse me?
Nineteen ninety-one, the internet wasn't around to speak of.
So I've got a, um, a concern, and I experienced it with the Thomas Fire, is that the, um, cell phones went down and, uh, and actually, and as did the, as did Wi-Fi. Is that something for our safety element to address in terms of, um, coordination with the, with the carriers and making sure that, to the extent necessary and possible, that they have, uh, backup to their, uh, transmitters and receivers?
Absolutely, and that could even, that could be even folded into policy in terms of how that's addressed to ensure that the, the local community or the city is in constant communication and working on making sure that that communication isn't severed, um, in the event of a, um, a disaster.
Yeah, I mean, right now, the county in particular has a very good, um, communication technology through the existing, um, cellphone companies. But if the cell towers, um, lose power, then it doesn't work. And, and we were, we were, you know, told to evacuate by our cell phones, but that, but the towers were still operating at that point in time, or at least the one that connected to us, so.
Yeah, I think in, in a disaster, you should not be relying on your cellphone. A lot of times with, with an earthquake, you're gonna lose that cellphone almost immediately. I think, I've been to many trainings, um, for, for local government on that. It's the, it's the walkie-talkies that'll keep you going.
And, and on the fire hazard, I would just point out that this old, um, safety element discusses fire hazards in two pages, on page, uh, twenty-nine of fifty-seven through, uh, thirty-two of fifty-seven. And I think, um, uh, I think the new safety element, given the city's experience the last few years.
You might agree that it needs more coverage.
More, more, much, much, much more coverage.
Yes.
Nineteen ninety-one, I don't think they envisioned.
I was impressed at how much coverage there was of earthquakes.
Correct.
When the only possible instance here was the ninety-four Northridge earthquake.
Right, but I think it's.
After this document.
It was reacting.
Other than that, it was a hundred and fifty years ago, the last major earthquake.
But, uh, I think the safety elements that I've seen now reviewing in other cities is those that are dated this older were reacting to the Loma Prieta earthquake, uh, I think in, uh, eighty, eighty-eight, eighty-seven, up in the Bay Area, and that major earthquake, and, uh, since then.
Collapsed the freeway.
The, yeah, obviously earthquakes are still, uh, something that's, obviously that has to be considered because of the, of the code. But obviously, fire will likely be a lot more.
An expanded part of this safety element, I would.
Yeah, especially since the last couple of years, and the projection to get much worse.
All right, in the, in the absence of additional immediate questions for staff.
I, I, I have a question for staff, sorry.
Oh, great, thank you.
Yeah, no, no problem. I was curious, um, you know, the Ventura County has updated their plan, um, through two thousand forty. And I was just curious, are we going to reference some of that? They have a safety element in their general plan that outlines, you know, incorporates parts of the unincorporated areas of Ojai, of the valley. But I was just wondering if they're, they're gonna start looking at that Ventura County plan as well and bring in some of those elements.
I wouldn't discount that. I, I think you're, I think you're on to something to, to take a look at that and use that as a resource. Absolutely.
Awesome, yeah, great. Yeah, 'cause they outline a lot of that, uh, emergency response, as well as increasing temperatures. They, they look at water, um, so there's, there's a lot of, a lot of good pieces in there.
And I have to say, with the exception of the fact that earthquakes maybe were over-covered and the effects of earthquakes and fire was under-covered in this thirty-year-old document, it was very well-written, and I found it very interesting to read. But it, it also requires a good deal of updating, I think. Okay, let's, let's have a public comment on this, Mr. Miley, on item three.
Yes, hello, Bill Miley. Even though this is older, when I read all of the pages, I see a lot of conceptualized and generalized statements that are really good. Uh, so I would conclude that this element is very positive and meets government response, has met government responsibilities for public safety, welfare, and public health. But most documents can be made better, obviously. But I'd like to, um, that's what we're here for. But I'd like to make it do a quick review of what I know is good, that I believe this document produced and guided. Number one is the Stewart Canyon Debris Basin, which has been here as long as I've been here and beyond. Its purpose obviously is to deal with heavy rain debris flow as catchment from one of our major mountain flow geologies, Stewart Canyon. But it gets cleaned out every, every year, late spring and every summer, and is always ready for the next winter. It's a major flood control structure for our city, and I think the folks that did this should be recognized and complimented for making it happen. It also acts, in my opinion, as a fire break environment north of the city. The Lower Stewart Canyon Creek Restoration, that's been going on, so the water flows through. It's past, present, and future. And then we have all the active Arundel Removal going on, I believe, from the Ventura County Watershed District. We've had the city with earthquake mapping, tighter building codes, efforts to strengthen masonry buildings, educational efforts for citizens to have go structures ready for evacuation, prayer houses for shaking, our Building Appeals Board effort to harden the community for fire, our Ojai Valley Fire Safety Council, it's been around for twenty years. We gave them twenty, fifty thousand dollars, they produced like three million. Our Emergency Evacuation Relations for the Valley Disaster, it was apparent that we talked about establishing them. But this document clarifies why it's impossible. We have four exits, but some of them get blocked. And so the decision to go certain places has to be made sometimes at the moment. Our Sheriff Contract, I believe, is really good, maybe can be made better. We need more digital artificial intelligence, more resolutions of social health issues by mental health professionals. Our Fire Department Services are good, paid for through tax assessments, and they do outstanding wildfire. I'm almost through. Pocetis Municipal Water District, when they took over the valley, they are very responsible. They're producing better, replacing the lines, equipment, they're working on two state water supplies. Our electricity, Southern California Anderson, changing poles, upgrading wires, insulated wires. County disaster coordination with the county's emergency services. Caltrans is keeping our roads in condition and safe, and these are the needs. I believe that we should use Google Earth maps showing risks, structures, and services so that people can see them, our public can see them. We should have more digital information and alerts, we should have more automatic warning systems. We should have, uh, semi or annual public reviews of all safety factors in this element published. And the latest would be a three-dimensional valley topographical map that we could put in the middle of this room, that people could look at to see where the, pour water in it, see the water flows down, flood here, fire comes here, emergency here. Anyway, that's my favorite. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else present here who wishes to speak? I don't see any. Uh, Sherry, do we have anyone in a waiting room who wants to talk about the safety element? All right, thank you. Then we'll, we'll close this period of public comment and return the discussion to the commission. One of the things that I asked was, where is this, this, um, master environmental assessment? And lo and behold, I found it on the city website. If you go, if you open up the initial city website and you do a search on master environmental assessment, it pulls up about a hundred and twenty-five, hundred and thirty-five-page document, which I found really refreshing. The downside is there are a, probably a dozen maps in there and you can't read any of them. I gave Lucas a couple of examples. They're very, very light, no contrast in the maps, I could barely make out what was in them. But it's a, it's a good start. That was a document that predated this safety element by about three years. As we said, the references to state law, to state bodies, for example, the Division of Mines and Geology has a different name now, things like that. I presume that all of that will be, will be covered by the, the, the consultant's updates. One thing that couldn't be covered by this document was the nineteen ninety-four Northridge quake. And I remember reading at the time, those of you that, um, most people, I think, are probably familiar with the San Fernando Valley. What I read was the mountains to the north side of the San Fernando Valley actually went up eighteen inches as a result of that slip-fault earthquake, which is a pretty heavy lift. But I think that's something, to the extent that the ninety-four or Northridge quake had an effect in Ojai, it should be mentioned in the document. We've already said there's not enough coverage of fire. The, uh, as we, as we do an update of this safety element, does that extend to an update of this master environmental assessment? Or is that going to be a separate project?
Well, there's gonna be a, an environmental document that's gonna come out of this as well. And that's, that's a significant, uh, lift as well, and that'll, that'll be interacting with this.
The path by which that is done.
Yeah, I mean.
This master.
It's likely that.
Environmental assessment is a pretty big document.
Yeah, it's likely that any of the maps that you're seeing here either are out of date or there's new maps that are gonna be provided as well. So just know that, that all that information will be provided, assessed, reviewed as well.
Okay.
There'll be an EIR with the.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, there'll be a, a fairly substantive EIR that happened.
I remember hearing there would be, yeah. I didn't mean to dominate questions for staff here or any discussion. So if somebody else wants to get in, please do. Little density soil. Yeah, there's, there's kind of vague references to a lot of things in this document. The city recently passed an ordinance to do thus and so. I went back to the city website and looked at ojai.ca.gov slash ordinances. And it only goes back to twenty twelve, I think. And ordinance is somewhere in the six hundred range, I think, and we're up to the eight hundreds range now. But there's other stuff that happened before that certainly affected this document. And I don't know how to even find that stuff to, to try to understand. I don't know how to even find that stuff to try to understand what it was all about.
In the document, is it giving, I don't remember it giving a reference to an ordinance number, did it?
No, no, it just said, "The city passed an ordinance to do thus and so." And I'd like to know what part of the code was affected. What did they do when they passed that ordinance?
That particular ordinance may have been amended a dozen, half a dozen times since-
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Possibly.
Yeah.
So it's possibly a bunch of layers. I mean, 2004 was the most substantial change that we saw with the zoning code.
I don't remember if it was in here, or if it was in the MEA that I saw it, but there was reference to an ordinance. Oh, I know, I was looking, I was looking at some portion of the code, and there was reference to an ordinance 601, which I, it was quite a while ago, but that covered a lot of territory. I don't think that was the 2004 ordinance. Just a lot of stuff left to be defined in here. There's a person inquiry or locator system. Don't know what that is, what the city has. Maybe the city had something 30 years ago.
We may have had something 30 years ago, and I'm not sure that that's in play today.
This is pre-internet where-
Yeah.
Where you, Google doesn't exist.
The other thing, the document still properly calls out government code 60532, but the pieces have shifted around, and there are pieces of 60532 now that specifically require a lot more information on various topics, whether it's earthquakes, or fire, or floods, or whatever, than is in here. So I presume that'll be part of what the consultant complies with in updating.
Yeah, and just to remind the commission, this is one of the elements that's receiving a substantial uplift. This isn't an element that's just getting a brush over in terms of consistency. It's getting reworked, all the new government codes and Senate bills and state laws that have come into play and are now required. All will be folded within this element. This element feels very light compared to what it more than likely will become as an update.
Yeah, and I haven't read the whole MEA yet, but it calls out, and this document calls out other documents that I could not find, like there's a 1979 master plan of drainage. I presume that's something that talks about the water courses within the city limits, or maybe other thing, maybe the storm sewers as well, I don't know, because I couldn't find it.
Yeah, that's through Public Works, I don't know that that's an update.
I couldn't find it on the Public Works website, so don't know. Also, flood protection ordinance.
John Trent has a question.
Yeah, just a quick comment.
Yes, please, John.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I was going through the county plan, and they have a section in their hazard and safety element about noise, and I was just, I know that we've talked about noise in the past and, you know, things that we could do, but I'm just wondering if this would be a good place to put in some measurements around noise?
Noise is actually its own element within the general plan itself.
Oh, perfect.
It's not one that's receiving a heavy uplift, but will be addressed to and updated to a certain degree. You know, it's interesting, we could actually, on a separate meeting, talk about the noise element. Simply because the consultant's not working on it, or only doing kind of broad strokes to it, doesn't necessarily mean that we can't look at it in a closer fashion, so.
It seems like we should look at the noise element. We, you know, on a fairly regular basis have either public comment, or, you know, I've even heard some of my fellow commissioners mention something about how can we regulate such and such because of the volume of the noise?
We talked about motorcycles at the last meeting.
Motorcycles in particular. But, you know, even like, I mean, I know the city's changed the leaf blowers out, but, yeah, it would be interesting for us to take a look at it. And then as far as the safety element, I too read through the entire document that was presented to us in our packet, and it was really good to look at it again, I had looked at it probably when I first got on the commission. But just generally speaking, it just seems very obvious that until we get the revised, updated version, it's hard to make any comments because with technology, with experience, what's happened with climate, you know, earthquakes, earthquakes, fire, et cetera, there's going to be so much more information that I don't really have any comments to make on what we got tonight. I think, I'm looking forward to the revised and updated version because it's, you know, I do expect it to be rather thick and very relevant and important, and I look forward to that. And do we have an idea when that'll come back to us? Or you may have said that earlier, I maybe missed it.
Yeah, I mean, we went through the, kind of, the schedule at the, I think it was the last meeting or the meeting before.
Yeah, you did the meeting before, I think, and I was just trying to remember for this particular element.
Yeah, so we're ironing out that schedule moving forward. I think we're anticipating a workshop at the beginning of next year.
Okay, yeah.
I don't have a specific date at this point to lock in, but I know we're looking at those timelines right now.
Thank you.
In addition, as you all know, at this point, it's my custom to write lots of questions to Lucas, and that's one bane of his existence, but there he is. If you have read through this document, and you think there are errors that have crept in over the past 30 years, or if there are topics that are missing, or topics that are undercovered, I would say, send a note to Lucas, and he'll pass all of that along to the consultant, because they need to know what the people that are going to be reviewing their work are thinking. So, and you don't have to do anything, but if you find something, if you see something, say something, that old saw.
Yep.
The same thing applies as we look at any individual element of the general plan.
It applies to land use. And if there are comments in terms of procedural or bits and pieces that you're seeing, like for instance, in another locale's general plan, and you're wondering why that's not included here, well, just be reminded that this document's 30 years old. Ventura County just recently adopted theirs, so of course, theirs is brand-new, shiny, it's got all the bells and whistles, for the most part. Obviously, you can always draw conclusions from certain things as well, or opinions. But that's a far cry from what we have here.
But if you see a bell or whistle in another document that you think ought to be part of this, say so.
Right.
And let the consultants chew on that and come up with what they can to meet our needs.
And just so the commission's aware, the comments that we've received from this commission up to this point, when I say "we," I mean, community development, we've already forwarded those comments off, so the consultants got them, they're chewing the fat, and they're reviewing and including to some degree, so.
Are they going to be doing any original research in this process, or will they be taking research that's already been done?
You mean grassroots? Yes, grassroots, if you're talking about like grassroots. They're using all resources that they have available. And from an environmental standpoint, we're talking about technical documents that'll be used as a part of each of the elements that'll be guided, guiding some of the work that you'll be seeing, or most of the work, actually, that you'll be seeing here. I know we've talked about this before, but each of these elements are interwoven as well. At one point, we're going to be talking about the environmental justice element, which I think is either going to be the next one or the one after, depending on what the commission's pleasure is, working on the noise or working on environmental. In terms of the order, I've got us actually looking at environmental justice, but we can always adjust that schedule, we're not set in stone with this, for sure.
In looking at the safety element, I'm just thinking, since the fatalities of the Thomas fire, with one exception, really took place in the echo of the Thomas fire up in Montecito with the debris flow and mud flow, and I don't know if we have any special issues or interests in debris flow and mud flow in the town of Ojai or not. I mean, I certainly see some fairly specific pieces of concrete infrastructure that's been put in there, and I have a sense that some of that is not just for water, but is our debris basins and things like that. Is it your read of that, that that's adequately covered?
In this document, no.
Is there primary research coming from anyone else about those issues within our jurisdiction?
Yeah, so in terms of what you're, I mean, you're talking about some of the disasters that came as a result of something else, like for instance, the fire that swept through got rid of all of the vegetation that would have held that in place, and that then created quite a substantial issue. And that was unfortunate, that was truly a disaster, that mud flow. It's very likely that will be folded into the discussion. I mean, for instance, with the safety element, talking about events that had taken place the previous years. Talking about a history, having that as a part of the record, I think is critical. The Thomas fire, obviously, will be discussed within the safety element. If it's not, it will be included when I talk to the consultant.
Right, yeah.
But they're already aware of it, so.
I guess the question is, what technical reports are we doing as a part of the work?
I don't have a, that's a really good question that I don't have an answer for yet, but I know that those will be in hand sometime in the future. And we'll get a chance to take a look at those.
Yeah, do you think there will be some hydrological?
I would imagine so. I can't imagine that we wouldn't have that.
Yeah, the issue that I'm really poking here is the adequacy of our current infrastructure to hold back or sort out debris flow and mud flow as a subsequent event to a fire. And it's not per se a flood, it's something that really takes on different characteristics, and I know there are areas, I assume there are areas in town that are quite vulnerable to a significant mud flow which gets initiated very high up.
Yeah, the nice thing is, is there's lots of mapping tools out there. GIS is definitely a resource that was not available, you can see that with these maps today. These will not be the types of maps that you will be seeing as a part of the record for these, each of these elements. This is a far cry. We've come a long ways with technology, so the mapping, I think, will be much more accurate, and you'll be able to see, it'll be granular, or not granular versus what we're seeing here, so if I said that correctly.
In fact, the Google Maps topological view gives you a really excellent insight into what could happen in the valley. Who's going to take that and make an assessment of the risks associated with various areas?
That's the consultants, yeah. You've got the consultants that are drawing some conclusions.
But they do need the technological reports, that they base their analysis, well, that's going to, the technological reports are going to include, or technical reports are going to include analysis, but they're going to, they should be looking, I mean, yeah, you have to have a basis for where are the debris basins, and are they capacity, or do we need more, I mean, what are the risks?
And that can even come out of some of the policies in terms of doing additional review and analysis. I mean, that's very true. So those are all really, I think those are all really good, important points to be making, especially knowing some of the disasters, the natural disasters we've seen here in the last few years and even further back.
I mean, to be specific about, excuse me, to be specific about it is my daughter lives on Kenyatta, and, you know, Kenyatta in front of her house is essentially a spillway from a debris basin to the block and a half north of it. There's a six or eight-foot diameter pipe that runs under Kenyatta right now. But there's also a lip of the- But if that debris basin overflows, there's going to be a lot of trouble on Kenyatta, yeah. So I mean, that's the specific, because I wonder about the safety there, and it could be that we're great for a 500-year flood, but, you know, if we're only good for a 50-year flood, that's not, that's not really- And it should be pointed out. Right, exactly, exactly. Another example, and I could quote you a long paragraph here, but part of this 65302 in the government code now calls, and I, this is, I pulled the current version off the state legislature website, calls out "climate change resiliency," a phrase that was unknown when this document was written, and the meaning of which was probably overlooked. So, that's, I think the document needs more discussion of Ojai's climate change resiliency plans.
Well, yeah, and just to follow up on that, I just, I'm sure the EIR will be talking about climate change risk, but I do think we need to have substantial discussion in the general plan safety element about the increased risk from flooding, debris flows, all of that. And the adaptation is important, but I think the mitigation is important as well. How are we going to meet our climate change goals of being carbon neutral, and the mitigation that we have to do to achieve those goals? So, I know we've talked about it before, just reiterating.
In many places, there's, in terms of the implementing programs, we've got goals and policy and implementing programs. Time after time, it says the city should conduct a public education program on topic X, and then it's topic Y and topic Z. I've never heard of any of those. And if there is one, that would be good to talk about, if there isn't one, we should consider whether they should be one, or whether the discussion should be dropped. Yeah, it just goes on and on, but overall, in particular, the discussion of earthquakes and the effects thereof, I found it fascinating to read this document. I thought the other topics were not covered in the same, well, they weren't covered in the same amount of volume. Arguably, they certainly should be getting more emphasis now, fire, water, fire, flood, and the effects of climate change. But I'll send you a whole list of detailed comments. I did, in fact, read right to the end, and it was a long slog. You know, as a subset of climate change, we also have a shift of the flora that we have here. We have a lot of invasive flora that didn't exist when this was written, or is taking a much different impact, some of which is very wasteful of water, some of this flora, these weeds. Yes. And some of them are going to be, as time goes on, you know, a significant fire hazard, so I think we have to be aware of, in the climate change, that our vegetation is changing here, and that that's having an impact. And by the way, so it's also having an impact on the pests that we have here. We're creating a healthy environment for pests that our plants had never adapted to. So, again, I would recommend to all the commissioners, if you have specific comments about some part of this safety element, that you send those to Lucas, and you can be sure that the consultants will get the word. Any other questions or discussion on this point? All right? If not, let's move on to item number four, the priorities of the Planning Commission and the Community Development Department. I recall from the last city council meeting, the comment that this was not to be a prioritized list, at least in the view of the city council, and I don't know if that meant everything was priority one, or get to it when you can. I think some of these things, we probably have shorter deadlines than others. But Lucas talked to us.
Yeah, so there's two things that came out of the October 26 city council meeting regarding this item. One is, they took a look at all these items, realizing that we had, that this commission had put a numerical order onto each of these items, a hierarchy, if you will. Realizing that there was some uncomfort towards that- if you will, realizing that that they, there was some uncomfort towards that, said, drop the numerical order, just understand that that can ebb and flow. The other piece is they had looked at adding a parking study or a parking program to this list as well. So those are the, those are the two things that came out of of that meeting. And recognizing also that the general plan is, while it's not numeric, the general plan is at the top of the list.
I do have one question, and and I'm glad you brought up the parking study. Just as a matter of procedure, how would the Planning Commission conduct a parking study? These things are usually done by consultants.
Right, it would be an RFP.
To the best of my knowledge, we have no budget.
Set aside funds for it, so that there'd have to be funds set aside for it, do an RFP and see how much that would cost for a consult to do that, and then figure out if that's something that that the council's willing to spend money on.
So it would be more along the lines of, we think there are these particular problems or lack of problems, and recommend to the city council that they engage a consultant to do a parking study
For the following reasons.
and take these thoughts in mind.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, I can live with that.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think their intent was to say, hey, commission, why don't you dive into a parking study and see what comes out of that? I think it was really kind of, let that consultant do it, and let's deliberate and see what comes out of it. Yeah, I like
Okay, but they want, I think they want us to recommend that there be one.
Yep, so this is the, this is the work program that we're seeing moving forward into, you know, leaning into 2022 right now. So it's a hefty, it's a hefty lift here.
And we have, we have currently at city council direction, a moratorium on formula business openings, licensings, whatever you want to call it. I don't know how long that moratorium goes. I understand it can be extended out to maybe two years.
August 2022.
I don't think we want to take that long to deal with the topic, but my feeling is we're going to be in a better relationship with the city council if we deal with formula businesses sooner rather than later.
Yeah, and in terms of formula businesses, we are reaching out to local communities, well, local community in particular, as well as another city that's slightly larger, well, much larger than us, and getting some feedback from them. This item, we'll be coming back to this commission sooner rather than later. I I stressed this, I don't know if it was the last meeting or the way meeting before, but the reality is, is I've seen this with moratoriums that, once a moratorium's been set, it's almost as if everybody starts to relax, and that's probably the opposite thing to do, because there's a lot of work to be done in order to get us to the point where there's some sort of comfort in terms of those potential changes, so.
Okay, and and the recommendation is to discuss it. Okay, well, here we are, we're discussing it. Vice Chair Nolan, you have thoughts on this? I know the tree ordinance is one of your favorites.
Well, yes. So, you know, I mean, I I noticed, and you know, Lucas mentioned this right at the beginning, that right there on our packet on page 1 of 1, you know, the city council made the note that this list is a list not to, you know, follow it in numeric order, but to be fluid and allow for the items to be addressed as the need arises. So I think, you know, and you had mentioned mail, you just addressed the formula business code. We know the general plan was kind of the exception. We're working that ongoing. I, you know, truthfully, I could see doing like the fire suppression and maybe the tree ordinance, water efficient landscape, because I feel that that ties in with actually fire suppression, believe it or not, and to a degree it does. So those two could always be done here, potentially side by side. I also think the the zoning is important. That's number seven. But the title, I guess it's Title 10 update, but it says the VMU zoning from commercial manufacturing to special purpose district. I I mean, I know we've had, not only at city or planning commission, but probably more at city council, members of the public come and address concern about zoning that's, in a sense, outdated or just not efficient.
We we do have, we do have a group of aggrieved citizens right now that would like to see some action on that rezoning.
Yeah.
And
Yeah, yeah, and I might, I wanted to say for full disclosure, I I recently have been hired by a property owner in that area. So I, when that comes forward, I'm not sure if I can be part of the discussion or if I would have to recuse myself, but I just wanted to say it upfront.
All decisions on recusal we'll make when the item comes in.
Yeah, but I just wanted to say it now, just because
That's, that's a good thing. Thank you, and consult with the attorney.
Something, but I was in favor of doing it before I got hurt by the client, but, and I think it's important, and not just for my client, but for the whole community. So I'm also just, I mean, it's hard to say, I mean, the design guidelines, I I see some things going on in town that I'm not sure that they're compatible with an environmental, what I would call kind of like an environmental threshold or guidelines, and it, I guess, you know, in a way, it almost ties in even with fire suppression and water, et cetera. So in a way, those design guidelines to me are actually important, too. So I don't, I don't even know if I answered your question, Chair Quillis, I'm just seeing that several of these are important, and I could see doing them sooner and later or in tandem, because there's some crossover.
Yeah, well, I, my impression was that city council wanted to take all the numbers off that list.
Yeah, they did.
We understand the general plan update is first priority after that.
Correct.
It's not, it's not clear, but if we're, if if we're out of specific questions for staff on this report,
I have one
Please go ahead. Then I'd, then I'd like to have public comment before we get into deliberation.
Chair Quillis, I just have one more comment, and we, you know, we had just mentioned the possibility of a parking study and, you know, hiring a consultant, but I'm I'm sure you probably remember this, and it probably, it could have been three, it might have been four years ago, the Complete Street Subcommittee actually started working on parking issues. We'd actually ordered, we had aerial maps, et cetera, that are actually still at City Hall, and we made, we made a whole list of recommendations, and it was prior to city council doing their committee that they did on parking. And I know we shared the information. I don't know what happened with that sharing to city council, but if needed, we could resurrect that research that we did and share it. I'm I'm just volunteering that as a possible resource if needed.
Good, good. Commissioner Lottis, please.
Yes, it would be good to get a report from them when we start, when we move to initiate a parking study or to start talking about it. But I just, so I just had a comment on fire suppression mitigation. I was like, what is that? Because we're not really mitigating fire suppression. I think we're mitigating fire hazards.
It was, it was combining, it was actually combining, I think, we did two or three
If you put a slash between suppression and mitigation, it might work.
Yeah, be, there you go. Actually, that's a good point. If you do the slash, maybe that's the solution.
I think that would handle it. I just, I just, as I was looking at it, I just was like, I'm not really sure what that is, so.
So just, just so the commissions aware, moving forward, I'm going to take these numbers off. I only left it this way so you could see it and then had the comments regarding council from the previous meeting. So you're just going to see them as bullet points moving forward.
Yeah, that probably would have been the more politic thing to do in the first place.
But I guess it's
Mr. Chairman, I I've got a question, and there's a story behind every one of these. So I'm at the point where I'm I'm early in all these stories or I don't know them at all.
Yep.
And so I don't know what, why any of these things are prioritized either above or below or, you know, any anything else.
Even necessarily what all the content is there.
Right, what would, how would you suggest I go about?
If you'd like, Commissioner Bennett, you and I could schedule a call, and I could walk you through kind of what each of these
Great, why don't we do that?
And then that'll give you some context moving forward. And there's even information and staff reports that I could share with you as well. Some of these actually have several staff reports. Title 10 certainly has had quite a bit of discussion with this commission at this point.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And as as our attorney said, one-on-one communications, even between commission members, is okay if you keep it to one-on-one. So if you wanted to talk about Title 10 update, Lucas and I have been working on that quite a bit over the last two years and and have brought some of our work to the Planning Commission for review. Formula business ordinance, we've all talked about. Tree ordinance, if you want to understand that better, Vice Chair Nolan is a landscape architect and knows that stuff backwards and forwards.
I know.
Sequa guidelines, I'm still confused about that. What are the city's sequa guidelines? They're
Thirty seconds, haven't been updated since 2002. Provide the guidelines necessary when you're, when a document or a project, in fact, is within the sequel box, meaning it's got to go through some sort of threshold process.
You, you can call out a couple huge chunks of state law, Public Resources Code and Health and Safety Code, that kind of embodies that idea of sequa guidelines, or the, what is it, Code of California Regulations, the Administrative Code has a bunch of that stuff, too, I imagine.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot that goes on with that. It's an, it's an important document. It's really supposed to be updated annually as as codes change. It hasn't been updated since 2002.
So there won't be any dumb questions there. There might be some, some squishy answers. Then, before we we go farther into any deliberations, let's have our public comment. Mr. Miley, still there to speak on item four?
Good evening, Bill Miley, for the record. With the parking study now one of the eight next year priorities, it becomes almost front and center with at least two proposal developments, proposal developments, board developments coming to the commission soon. A key one will be the Oaks of Ojai Hotel under new ownership called the El Romo Hotel, with innovative requests for onsite and offsite shared parking. The other is the Ojai Unified School District's Ojai Town Square, with hotel, restaurant, pool, activity center, affordable housing, retail spaces with lots of parking needs, requirements, and we have residential streets that bound this town square site that are kind of narrow and already people's cars parked on it. So with two major transportation, with the, with our transportation element, it seems to me that the parking study is really important for the future of our city. So last week at the city council in Olivi Bowl, when I spoke to the city council, I asked them to add a parking study to your list of seven priorities for next year's work, and I mentioned that I knew that this would be through an RFP, which wouldn't require you to do the work, just the analysis and the recommendations. Now, as I heard the council, they directed the commission to see that a parking study was done, not suggested next year, and that's what I remember. And I liked, I hope you will recognize that that's what they asked. Thank you. Or that's what they directed.
Thank you, sir. All right, no one else in the waiting room or waiting remotely to talk to us? Sherry? Okay, very good. Then we will, we will close the period of public comment on this item. And more thoughts from commissioners. Vice Chair Nolan, any, anything you'd like to add to the discussion here?
I was unmuted. Sorry for the delay there. No, I think I'm okay. I I think my my next question will be, I mean, you kind of asked for input from all of us, but, and I understand the general plan will be, you know, in the foreground, it'll be, you know, number one, but how are we going to figure out which one of these we go to next? Because at some point, we're going to have to decide. Our staff will decide, or do we wait for a city council to tell us?
Well, I think, yeah, I think city council told us, there are, well, what I heard from one city council member was, the Planning Commission cannot dictate priorities to the city council. I don't think that was our intention.
Well, I, yeah, no, and I know that, and I know they said, you know, don't put, you know, don't number these, and we're going to bulletite them, and we know that the general plan's going to take precedence, but in the event that we have time to work on one of these, you know, let's say during our meetings, and it says, you know, be be fluid as the need arises, what's the need that's going to dictate which one we are, what's that procedure, or what's going to trigger, hey, there's a need now, so we're going to go to a certain one of these? Does that make sense?
I think, I think part of it is, is going to be, what material does staff have ready to present to us?
I think it really is dependent on the resources and
Yes.
I'll just, I'll just tell this commission right now, and I think it's one of the items that are coming up. There is a lot of projects that we're currently working on in-house that are currently on the agenda to be scheduled out through this year, and I could tell you that we have just a mountain of other projects that are in for review that'll be coming to this commission as well. So there's a lot of current projects that we're working on right now. These are certainly within the work program, folding these in somehow into the schedule. I just can't say, oh, yeah, we're going to work on this one January, starting January 1st. I I can't make any of those promises, just simply because I don't, I'd almost hold off on talking about agenda item, future agenda items right now until we get to it, just because there's, once you see this, there's a, there's a logjam that we got going on right now. We're trying to unlock.
The thing that's not on this list here is what you might, what Congress, I think, calls the regular order of business. All the cases that come to us because people are requesting permits from the city to do one thing or another.
And I just want to caution the commission, those take priority because of the Permit Streamlining Act. We have to act on those. And so
Yeah, I know.
And so sometimes these priorities go down the list because we have a legal requirement to act on those particular things. So eventually, I'm sure staff will, it's staff, staff has a, has a, you know, a long-term view of what each agenda will look like, but things can move, as we saw today, at today's meeting, with one item that was removed. And so I I would, I I think that the commission would be, I think that the advice is to commission is that staff will know when to embed these priorities into the
I agree. I think there'll be, there'll be a sense. It's, it's heavy right now, but it's not always going to be heavy. These, these projects do ebb and flow.
And it may not be the best use of the commission's time or to have a productive discussion on one of these items if there are two or three CUPs on the commission's agenda that are going to take a long time, because then these items become almost an afterthought because everyone wants to go home.
Yeah, we're, we're going to hit future agenda items here in a minute, and it's, it's ugly.
I wasn't trying to supersede, because I I completely agree, yes, and I, and understand in by law, we, of course, our permitted projects are, you know, our usual business. I just wasn't sure, now that we were just putting a bullet by them. So it was just a little more for clarity, not a push to ask for, you know, a given date and order, et cetera.
Now, I, okay, let's
I understand that.
Okay, I was going to say, I'd like to, to continue this conversation and future agenda items.
That's fine.
Yeah, and and as, as, I think we can leave this priorities of the Planning Commission and the CDD on our agenda and talk about it each meeting, even if only briefly.
Yep, just like the general plan update, I think this, I would recommend that we keep this on just as a regular circulating agenda so that we're aware of it.
Yeah, and and it would, it would be helpful, I think, to the commission if, when it's appropriate and when you have some clarity, if you can say, item X is a really heavy lift for the staff. for the staff right now, but item Y and item Z are fairly small things that we probably could knock out two meetings from now.
Yeah.
That, that general kind of thing, I think, would be helpful to us.
Yeah.
You know, one, but one thing we could talk about, and it kind of comes out of what Nik, Nikhil talked about, you know, well, I call it a task force. I don't know what a task, I don't, I don't know if a task force is a ad hoc group or a subcommittee group, but whatever. For example, perhaps we could talk about establishing a small task force group of, you know, people with, with the necessary experience or perspectives on the tree ordinance and the water efficient landscaping. And that would supplement the staff, the staff resources that we have, but we could bring expertise to bear on this as, and kind of come, do the preliminary work leading up into some draft kind of material.
So what you're referring to is, I think it's probably best achieved through an ad hoc committee. And so you could, it's not on the agenda today, so you can appoint anyone to an ad hoc committee today.
Oh, no, 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 just raising it.
But, an ad hoc committee that's specifically to study one particular item for, and you have to give them a time limit. So, over, you know, a three-month period, come back in three months and report on this ad hoc committee. It's not a Brown Act meeting, and it's not a Brown Act committee, but it's only specifically for this purpose, and it has to be, I would, you know, one member of the commission or two members of the commission working with staff. And that's...
I'm just raising, yes, just an idea, I'd like to, maybe we could talk about that at a subsequent meeting, but that might be an item that would be really applicable to that kind of bringing resources to bear.
I've, I've heard talk in years past of a tree committee. Vice Chair Nolan would know more about that.
Yes, she would.
But that, that might be something that could be, you know, a part of the core of an ad hoc committee.
Yeah, the ad hoc is very specific, very focused.
Yeah.
If I could ask the council just real quickly, is there, is there members of the public, like professionals that could be brought in as well with expertise? I mean, we're talking about two members as an, as an ad hoc. I know it's something we'd be talking about potentially in the near future. I'm just kind of curious.
Right, that ad hoc committee could then go out and solicit information from members of the public or, you know, but again, this, this commission has no discretionary funding authority.
Okay.
So even though council may direct it to do something like a traffic, a tree study or some, or a traffic study or a parking study, ultimately, this commission has no power to appropriate any money of any kind. And so, anything that the ad hoc committee would be doing without talking to public would be done for free.
But diving in, into the code section itself and looking at potential revisions, holes, maybe in that...
They could, they could do that with members of the public, right.
Keeping it up, maybe.
Yeah, but, yeah, but it have to be a very, very specific purpose and time limited.
So in terms of money, are you talking about any utilization of city hall meeting rooms or that kind of thing?
No, well, city hall meeting rooms, again...
I mean, I'm thinking of voluntary effort completely, but, but there would be some, I mean, most likely there'd be some minimal use of city facilities.
I mean, that, that would, they would, I mean, you couldn't use them on...
We need council approval for that.
Yeah, you, I mean, you couldn't necessarily use that for the specific, I mean, you could meet in, for example, the chambers, because it's technically open to the public with, as part of this ad hoc committee, but then if you don't want it to be open to the public, then it's, you know, you're basically creating something along those lines. And same thing with, for example, use of staff time. That would be specifically for that purpose and, and like Lucas would, you know, do that. But if employing consultants or going out and...
No, I wasn't even, no, no, I was just, no, no, complete, a complete volunteer effort because I think we've got a lot, I think we probably have all the expertise we need probably within the community.
Sure.
And bring that to bear on this, on just...
Yeah.
Brainstorming and thinking and problem solving about the ordinance we've got and, and what we need to do.
In theory, yes, you could probably use the city resources, including the website and the city's social media and, and the use of the city hall facilities. But again, I would, on that point, I think, I think that's a discretionary approval from the city for the, for that use.
Yeah, and again, just be careful with the social media.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, of course. So, so we might reckon, so the steps would be, we might talk about this, if we like the idea, we might then make a recommendation to the council to authorize that kind of thing.
I'm sorry. No, there's nothing, there's nothing...
If we're something that required a consultant, we would have to recommend to the council that they engage.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Okay, so if it's just a volunteer group, we just want them to brainstorm and problem solve, that is something that we could establish.
Yeah, but just keeping in mind all the Brown Act rules of, you know, how many people you're allowed, and so...
I wouldn't think of anything else but that.
Yeah. Yeah, I just, I wanted...
Especially after tonight's...
Especially after all of tonight's, don't you dare, items.
I'm not suggesting anything illegal.
Okay, any last thoughts, Commissioner Trent?
No, I'm, I'm good, thank you though.
Okay, Commissioner Bennett?
Do you think that the, I'm asking Lucas here, do you think that the city council understands that you can't do everything simultaneously?
Not all at once.
Simultaneously and all at once, and achieve their, their desire to get all this stuff without additional support?
I think council recognizes that, I don't want to speak for council, but I think they recognize that this is a heavy list. It's a heavy list.
Have you ever seen Lucas tear his shirt open and see the big red S there?
But as, as, I mean, has anybody said to you, we should get him some support for this period of time?
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to get into the specifics of, of potential employment, but we are looking at those options.
Okay.
And, yeah, budgetary is not one of the items that is currently before us. So I just want to caution on that point.
Yeah, no, I just, but to the extent that we're trying to figure out how we get this stuff done, I just wanted to know whether...
There's, there's nothing stopping the commissioner from appearing at the city council and making that point in public comment, or communicating to the city council that he believes the community development department needs more help or anything like that.
And the point that was given earlier to Commissioner Lottis, finding other resources that already exist within the community as a way to kind of spearhead the effort, I think, is, is a, is a good idea as well.
Yeah.
And Jamie, you've been, you've been to a number of city council meetings over the years. I've seen you there. And, and those of us that have been, recognize that there are a lot of people in this community, you pick any given topic, there's going to be a group of people that are passionate about that topic. And I have, I have urged the city council to make use of that. These are people that want to help. Let them help. You know, call, call them together and say, hey, I need this kind of information, can you all go out and find that and bring it back and we'll talk about it? And I recognize there's a certain amount of overhead in that, either for staff or for city council members, but you're also going to get a lot of free work done because there's a lot of passion out there in the community about solving problems. So. All right, well, let's move on to item five, director decisions. Any commissioners have any questions of Lucas about tree permits, sign permits, home occupation permits that have been granted through the month of October?
I have a question.
Please, go ahead.
I think it's the same question, but the pruning of the four protected trees, item two, and the pruning one sycamore, was there an arborist on site or, they would have had to submit their arborist report?
Yeah, so typically, the recommendation is for, for the arborists to be on site. And the reason why is because even the, even when we're requiring the arborist report to be submitted, we still need to make sure that the individuals that are pruning are doing it to the standards that are specified. And certainly within the recommendations that have been identified.
And it's, and it's right in the code, how much you can prune without a tree permit and other things that you might want to do at the arborist's recommendation or whatever that does require a tree permit.
All right.
Yeah, that's, that can sometimes be a judgment call.
Sometimes we need to make sure that that four-inch diameter is actually adhered to.
Well, four-inch diameter and the 25% rule, those two have been, have come up on a couple of recent basis.
And I did want to give a shout out to the 823 foothill lane replacing their small oak trees that they're removing. Fantastic. Oh, and then I, what's the declining sycamore tree? What does that mean? It's a...
Ill and getting worse?
Ill health?
Yeah, it was ill health. I can't remember exactly...
Does it mean it's hazardous?
I can't remember if it had root rot or what exactly was going on.
Is that the one at the church?
Was that the church one?
Is it the...
It's 409 Topa Topa.
Yeah, that's the Episcopal Church. And they replace a lot. She said they couldn't really find a new location for another tree, but when they, they're always seeking grants and they're constantly replenishing their trees.
Okay.
But being that it was a church, it was unsafe with so many people.
Okay.
So, but the arborist recommended it.
Okay, and documented in the arborist report. Thanks, okay.
I think it's also important to note, and just as a reminder, we always ask, I mean, we, we can't require it when it's considered hazardous or has been deemed hazardous, but we always ask and insist to a certain degree.
Understood. I appreciate all the attention you give to this, so, thanks.
Any other questions for staff on these director decisions? Great, let's move on to item six, future agenda items. You mentioned in a separate conversation that we had before the meeting, that the November 17th meeting, two weeks hence, is going to be at the Boyd Center.
Yes, so that meeting is, is scheduled at the Boyd, we're scheduling at the Boyd Center, it's already been sent off to the paper as such as well.
Because of the concept review at the school district.
Well, I would say it's be, right, so that concept review, for instance...
The, the, that particular item, I mean, the staff report is, I don't think has been finished on that one.
No, not for either one of these.
So I would caution, it's just the, the important information for the commission to note at this point is that the, since, before pre-discussing any of the items that are going to be on staff report, is that the meeting has been scheduled for the Boyd Center, not, not here. And it has been scheduled to meet for capacity reasons and, yeah, there'll be a staff report coming, but the meeting has been appropriately noticed.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you, I almost stepped on my own stuff there. So, I think it's, it's important to note that through, although I don't have the 15th on here, but just know that the 15th is already heavy already, in terms of items we're anticipating. Did I say, no, it's the, it's the 15th, I believe.
Yeah.
December, right. December I'm talking about, not November.
Yes.
I know it's not on here, but that agenda is already looking full as well.
Yeah, and, and just as a, the purpose of this item is for scheduling purposes, none of these items are up for discussion at today's meeting, it's just giving the commission a snapshot of, so for example, on the longer items, the only real, I mean, the benefit is maybe the commission member has, has dinner before the meeting or then after.
Yeah, so the, like, for instance, the pending items, there's two items that are on there. Either one of those items, depending on how quickly they get information to us, could be placed on a subsequent agenda either late December or early January of next year.
And you had spoken at a previous meeting a month or two ago about the meeting that would be the 29th, about the 6th of January, as, as being one that you were recommending canceling?
Yeah, only because of the, the scheduling during the holidays with...
Yeah, between the 15th of December and, and the 6th of January, there's going to be a lot of absence.
Now...
So that would be January 5th.
And I'm not saying that, I'm not recommending that we cancel it, but maybe that ends up being a scheduled meeting where we're focusing maybe on the priorities list. And we look at one of those items, I don't know.
Rather than hand, rather than introducing new cases.
Right, because I think it will be, I...
That's fine with me.
I, I accept the challenge if needed, meaning that we need, we need a heavy meeting on the sixth, on the 6th, but if we can schedule around that, it's preferred. But then again, we, we're bound by permit streamlining act, so sometimes that wins out overall.
Permit streamlining act, okay? Going to start, going to start looking like the egg ranch that consisted of one hen and a big whip.
Could I ask?
Lucas is the hen.
Could I ask, could I ask the hen a question?
Sure.
Could you just, in no more than 20 words, flesh out some of these? The sign program is, is it in process and it just...
Yep.
It needs us to read it and...
Yep, it's ready to go. And actually, that item came to this commission, I think, right before you joined?
Right.
It was a meeting before you joined, actually.
We saw it once before.
So it's coming, this one's coming back, the concept review is...
So I need to get a copy of that and read it?
Yep.
Because you all, you have all seen it.
Right.
Well, what I can do is after this meeting, I'll send you the date in which that item went forward so you can get caught up.
This concept review at the Ojai Unified School District is what?
I can't necessarily go into detail, but just know that it's...
There'll be a staff report coming that explains exactly what it is.
Yeah, it's the Chaparral Elementary School.
Got it. Okay, all right, that's, that's, then I know about the lot line adjustment, I don't need to know about the second story addition at this point. There's a, there's a change of use from commercial to live work, is that, is that the introduction of residents into an area which heretofore has been commercial?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a big issue. I mean, it's not a little issue, that's a big issue.
It is.
I mean, it is for me.
It's a big issue from a lot of different factions. That's the reason why it's coming to the commission.
Yeah.
And that's all we can say about it.
Yep, that's as far as I can go.
I just want to...
I gotta bite my tongue in certain circumstances.
Right, yeah, just, but what happens is people in the community think I know something, you know, it's like, so it comes zinging at me, I got no idea.
And you cover it up with three big words in a row and you know all those words, but...
I don't know.
But run together that way, it doesn't mean anything to you.
Yeah, I know about the Ojai Ranch, eh, eh, the general plan, okay.
That's a return also.
I think that's...
So in terms of the general plan update, I don't have an element next to it, but it could be the noise element.
Be good to at least have taken a look at that. And like all the other elements, if you see something, say something to Lucas.
Do we have a dark sky policy in the city?
We have a dark sky ordinance.
There is one, there is a dark sky, dark sky ordinance.
But it's not referred to as the dark, I mean, we all know it as the dark sky ordinance, but...
It's, it's not called the dark sky, it's called the lighting standards ordinance, it's in the code. Lucas can provide you a copy of that.
Yeah, it's 10-2...
10-16 or 10-16.5, one of those two.
Yeah.
And we can actually, Lucas can provide you...
Sure.
A copy.
Sure.
Or at least I can direct you to where you can get it.
And there, and there is always a current copy of the municipal code online.
Oh, it is?
Yes. Go to the city website, and there's a little rotating list there under the picture of topics, and if you let it circulate, one of those is the municipal code.
I guess that's it, thank you.
Terrific. Any other questions for staff? I'm going to save that one. All right, I think we're down to the end and the last, down to the last items here. Any commission member reports, any, anything of general interest, excuse me, that you'd like to bring to the commission? I'm, I'm heartened to see three people here live. I'm, I'm waiting. Someday, John, Trent and I will actually be in the same room at the same...
Yes, yes, yes. Make that a priority.
Yeah, I will be zooming for the December 1st meeting, but that's the only one. I'll be here for the rest. Anything else? All right, is our city council liaison still here? Okay. There being no other obvious business before the commission then, I declare this meeting adjourned.